Look into.
Watch.
Zoom. Good luck.
There's some notes in there.
Purple elephants.
Okay.
Looking to those meetings all the time.
I tried. Okay, where is that reminder for this?
Hey, well, welcome everybody. This is the Cits- Cottonwood Heights City Council work session, the first February 7th, 2023. As always, our first item is a review of our business meeting agenda for tonight. We have asked our culture and records, HR director Paul Melgar to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So we've got a comments period, a citizen comment period that then will lead right into a public comment period. And the public comment period is in regards to the PDD two text amendment for the Northern gravel bed. It doesn't look like Mike's here.
We're going to talk about that.
Okay, in our staff report. Okay, so we'll talk about that a little more detail in our staff report. But we will have a public comment period on that during our works in our business page. Legislative items for tonight include a consideration of ordinance 393, approving an amendment to the 2022-2023 budget. Scott, you want to discuss that briefly?
Yeah, and I have for Canada, if you could each maybe just make one of these are already included in your budget packet or you're sorry, your council packet for tonight. But just wanted to outline one change that we made from when we reviewed this actually three weeks ago. Typically would be two weeks ago, but we had a little as long as a month last month. It's on page two. The bond for the Hillside Plaza, we had verbally talked, I had it at 14 million 160,000 last month. We needed to expand that a little higher for composing costs that we had. And then we realized we would also need to have some a title company involved in the transaction. So what's actually going to be a 14 million 300,000, we probably won't spend all of that money. It would be a little less than that, but we don't have all the figures quite yet. Just so that we can get that taken care of. So that's the one adjustment that we made to the budget adjustment from what we outlined three weeks ago.
Okay, great. Perfect. Any questions from the council? Okay, and then the second action item will be consideration of resolution 2023 dash zero eight, adopting amended and restated internal policies for the Cottonwood Heights City Council. We discussed that in our retreat. Do you want to say anything about it?
Yeah, just really, there's three things that are changed. There's some grammatical changes. And then IT, some of the equipment use that we discussed has been changed. And then the travel, travel reimbursement policy has been changed. We discussed those several months ago and last week and recommending approval of those changes.
Questions, comments? Okay. And then we'll have a bunch of minutes to prove that our consent count is accurate. Okay. So item three under staff reports, we have six different items that we're going to have discussions on tonight, today. And I'm going to start with the first one, which is our election options discussion. That's where Braille passed around an article that you guys can browse at your convenience. And I think that's in regards to the bill that gets up on the hill currently. So what what I wanted to do, we're, I don't, we're not going to move forward tonight on whether or not to do ranked voting. There are a couple of reasons why. So we've been waiting for pricing. We'd understood from the county that they had underestimated costs and that they were going to come back with a better cost estimate for what doing a ranked choice voting format would entail or what it would cover. So in your packets, you should have seen the cost breakdown. And so so we'll go over that just a little bit. So I think that the cost for doing ranked choice voting is just under $16,000. I think it's 15,709. 15,709. However, that's, that's the county's cost. The county then has to use the real, the ranked voice bullying software. And they are going to charge based on how many cities within Salt Lake County participate. So I've got, I asked, when we got those numbers, I asked our city manager, Tim Pingy, and the staff to reach out to other cities to see if we could get an idea of whether or not they would be participating. And so I'm going to give you some, some numbers now. Cities who participated last cycle, Taylorsville is not going to participate this year. Holiday participated last year, they are not going to participate. Draper participated last cycle, they are not going to participate.
May I just ask for clarification? This is something that is formal, they are, you just heard.
We, we just reached out to them. They had indicated to us the We, uh, we just reached out to them. They, they had indicated to us that, that they were gonna go the traditional route. So.
Whether they could change that, that's up to them, but they could, obviously.
Yeah, as far as a, a formal deliberation on that, this, I'm not sure on that, but this is what staff had indicated was where things were going.
Uh-huh, thank you.
So Draper will not. Sandy, uh, did last cycle and will not. Harriman did last cycle and will not. West Valley City did last cycle and will not. We got two in the affirmative. Well, so Mill Creek indicated that they would. However, Mill Creek was not aware of, of the county's, um, change in, in pricing. So after talking to one, uh, of the people who, who, who's a proponent for that, they are going to have a, uh, more, uh, a bigger in-depth discussion whether or not they want to do that. And then Salt Lake City, as of now, is, uh, planning on ranked choice voting. You can see the cost if one city does it. Salt Lake City would be paying thirty-six thousand dollars more than, uh, than just that good debt at sixteen thousand dollars they would, they would normally pay.
That's actually not completely correct. Salt Lake City has a different set of numbers based on whether they have, theirs are much larger. And they actually called this one out there because it doesn't make sense. If for Salt Lake City to be paying their number, their numbers are similar to ours, but the thirty-six thousand, just the highest portion of it. Does that make sense?
So, so, so the numbers that we got were from the county. So the county told us it's real simple. There's the cost for how many cities.
Right. That's how much the cost to us would be if those number of cities participated. They're not the same numbers to all of the cities. They all have more districts and stuff like that. I didn't think that.
Oh, okay.
And what was?
Salt Lake, hey, well. Salt Lake, Salt Lake and one cities, their, their number would be significantly, if we have a couple.
If they're the only one, it would, oh, wow.
So it could be, yeah, worse.
And what was the cost in, uh, two thousand twenty-one? For ranked choice voting, us to participate in the plot?
I have that for Cottonwood Heights, I mean.
Yes.
Twenty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Cause, yeah. Tim had.
So, so in the event that Mill Creek drops away, uh, but Salt Lake City remains, we'd be looking at eighteen thousand, which is still.
No, it would be thirty-two thousand.
Uh, so this, so what we were given in the meetings packet is incorrect.
So the, the, the software charge is on top of the county charge. So you'd be looking at fifteen thousand seven hundred plus of eighteen thousand.
Which, which is what it states in the, so what you have in your packet is correct. You just have to.
So you're adding both columns. So you're the, the fifteen thousand.
Uh, yeah, I see. So what is being called the RCV costs within this box are separate from the base cost of fifteen thousand seven oh nine?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct. So, uh, anyway, so, so, you know, the narrative in our last cycle was that ranked choice voting was less expensive. Um, it's not, and it's obviously gonna cost more, just as we're not a hundred percent sure what, as of now, if, if there were three cities, we'd be significantly seventy-eight thousand dollars more than, than what a general election with a primary in a in a general would, would cost the city.
Mayor, I've got a question. Uh, do we know how they came up with the initial number that we had for two thousand twenty-one? Do we, how did they base it? Was it per vote or what, what was it based at?
That's a good question, Doug.
Uh, as far as the, the ranked choice voting?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think that they estimated it, Paul, I mean, no, they, they just ran estimates on what it would cost for the equipment and the time.
Software, time, and the time obviously went up exponentially.
And then, and then distributed that based on population with the cities as well. So I believe that's how it occurred.
Number of registered voters and seats for election. Remember, we have three seats for election that year, not just two.
Yeah.
What cities are missing from this list?
So these are the cities that participated last time in the cycle.
There are, I mean, our US, there are twenty-three municipalities in the city and the county. Um, there's quite a few more that are.
Were there any other cities that were, um, contemplating using the word ranked choice voting?
Oh, I, you know, I, I am glad you said that, Tom. South Salt Lake, we did not get a response from. Is that right?
They're, they're still.
They're, they're undecided.
So, so we reached out and Paula, you can help me with this. We reached out to all the cities in Salt Lake County via listserv that we have. This was the response that we have, have as of right now with that.
And so, um, as we can live.
Thirty. I believe, I'm, I'm, uh, twenty-three.
Three.
So as we deliberate on this tonight, uh, uh, I show, for instance, if there were three cities, say there was Cottonwood Heights, Salt Lake City, and then either Mill Creek or South Salt Lake, uh, we would be looking at a total cost of twenty-seven thousand seven sixty-one. And that compares with the cost of no ranked choice voting, a primary and general election at twenty-four thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
So when you see the numbers are slightly higher than what was in the list. I had twenty-four thousand oh twenty-one for the traditional.
Is, is that what you're looking at? Want someone here?
Yeah, that's not the numbers that are in the one in the version I was at.
Oh.
What, what, what are you, so you're talking about nine thousand thirty-nine and fifteen seven oh nine?
Where is this? Now, see, the twenty-four one sixty-eight, that is not in the list that you gave me. Mine was slightly different, but that's okay. I think.
Is it, is it around twenty-four thousand?
No, it's, it's very close. It's just, it's just not exactly the same.
So if we were to, uh, discuss this in approximations, I think it's fair to say that the approximate additional cost to choose a ranked choice voting, uh, and again, we don't, we don't know, uh, how many other cities will participate, could be a, a three thousand dollar difference. Uh, that is ranked choice being three thousand dollars.
If there are four, then it's a dollar difference.
So.
Again, with the estimate, and if there's five, thirteen hundred dollar. Say those.
Yeah, so, um, so I'm, I, I would also like to ask the question, uh, in the event we deliberated this evening and there was a majority that did want to come to a consensus, uh, and we held that consensus but didn't necessarily notify the county until we know how many cities, I mean, I'm just wondering if, if we might.
So there's another, um, uh, issue that, that, that I would not want to go ahead and do that. And that is, it has to do with the, the article that you mentioned, that there's a bill that is being considered to, to not allow cities to, to do ranked choice voting. And so that was held up in a committee this week, so it's actually on a hold status. So they didn't move it forward and they also didn't kill it. And so with that legislative pending, then I don't think it would be worth it unless to go ahead and say, hey, we're gonna do ranked choice voting, not knowing whether or not it's even gonna be in an option for.
What is the date on that, Mayor? What, what is the date that they would like cities to declare on that? We know that.
I think there's not an arbitrary date. Is there, there, yeah.
Well, yeah, we have.
It's April.
April twenty-eighth is the deadline.
April twenty eighth.
Yeah, we did.
Legislative session will be over mid-March.
Mid-March. Okay, yeah, well, that has to be after.
Isn't it March fifth?
It's March, so it's the first week tomorrow.
So that the deadline is the, can you declare before that time period? Well, so anywhere between now and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to get the per, certain amount of time just because they have to go and start getting.
Right.
Dollars. I mean, they have to start doing work and.
Gives them a heads up so they kinda know where to start.
Mayor, that's also the deadline too. We draw, if you join RCB, because we, we China RCB decided that the county wasn't ready and then we withdrew. So if, even if you decide after March to join and then change your minds, April twenty-eighth would be the deadline to also.
So it gives you a little bit of, of a grace period to.
Well, you can give yourself a grace period by filing.
Oh, individually?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to have a final decision. The final answer is in whatever it is on the twenty-eighth of April.
Right.
Well, I, I would like to hear from Councilman Newell and Councilman Bracken, uh, on, on, you know.
Are, are, are you finished?
Yes.
Um, uh, do we have the filing dates? Paula?
Yes. Filing dates for.
For traditional and for RCB. I've asked a number of times, like, to just, you're, I keep forgetting them. I, I don't know if we've ever gotten them down for sure.
So for filing dates for regular election are June first through the seventh. Ranked choice voting would be eighth through the fifteenth.
Would be?
August eighth.
Oh, okay, I just said only a week later. I didn't hear the August.
You did pick the primary with that, correct?
Well, traditionally, you would have a, you file a, file, well, you don't know if you're gonna have a primary until you have filing.
Right.
Um, uh, and I mean, with ranked choice, you, you can choose it. I don't personally see it, uh, um, uh, no, Mayor, I mean, as far as the legislation is still out there, I expect that it will be held, but I tend to agree with you that with it being still out there, things happen.
Yeah.
At, at, at the legislature. And so I probably wouldn't say let's make a, a, a hard decision before March sixth or second or whatever, until legislature has actually done and we know for sure what they're doing. Um, uh, there's a lot of misinformation out there on, um, on, uh, rank choice and what it has done and what it hasn't done. I think that's probably the biggest thing that we're we're, we're facing. Um, the, the, uh, group that was very active in, um, Sandy had uh, uh, caused some issues there. I think that that's probably also the case. We've had with, uh, on the national scale, a lot of people questioning elections and what's going on, how they're done. Um, but regardless of the counting method, um, I did go through, um, even with what happened with Cottonwood Heights and our last one, we were between seventy-eight and eighty-two percent of all the ballots that were cast. We don't know that high of a percentage of the number that were people cast an extra vote or if they ranked or how many they ranked because Utah law prevents us, prevents the clerks from letting us into the cast vote spreader. And so it's, it's really hard to make deductions based on the data that we are given what may or may not have been impacted by, by rank choice.
Yeah.
Uh, my personal thoughts on the cost is um, they're really close, other than being the sole city that's doing it, which would make it quite a bit more expensive. I think that those are close enough as to be a wash. Um, I did go and have, I asked, uh, for the prior few years, our costs. And, um, uh, the last mayoral, our costs were, um, close to forty thousand, which is significantly more than what, what we've been quoted. Um, and similar on the last two, District One and District Two elections in nineteen, it was just under twenty-one thousand and in fifteen, it was fifteen-four. There wasn't a primary in fifteen, but there was a primary in District One. And so that also makes me a little bit cautious about the estimates from the clerk. Um, that's why suddenly everything got half as expensive as it used to be.
What was the year that it was forty thousand?
Four years ago for the mayor, seventeen, eighteen. And that's consistent. That number is more consistent with what I recall going through full city elections. I mean, back almost from, from, from day one, when we run in a full city, if we had to do a primary, it was like forty thousand dollars a pop.
Yeah.
Um, so at least right now, I, there, I'm, I'm, I've got some concerns about the where, if those are, costs are actually solid. Um, and then, uh,
Here's a variable to that is, uh, um, if, if, uh, you decided to do ranked choice voting and only two participate.
That's all about different nightmare.
You're paying, you're, you don't get a diminishing cost, even though you would then not need to have a primary, which would diminish your cost. Um, so that's another variable.
Part of the part of the numbers is taking into consideration the cost of the primary as well as the general election.
Yeah, the twenty-four.
Twenty-four, I think, well.
Is it only inclusive on your?
The primary.
Yes, it did say that.
And they're making a lot of assumptions here.
Well, and that's, I, I did, I did, I did break down, I called the election director, cause this blew my mind. If you only, the way their software is written is if you do only have two, they can't run it. RCB, I says, well, why not? The software, I says, there's no, you, you just run it. It's only one round and then you're done. But the software doesn't do that. I'm like, well, that is stupid. And I said, I use that word. I said, that makes no sense at all. Um, so I, it's, uh.
So let me add, our, town member Newell hasn't got a chance to speak.
No, I, I do object to where I may.
I know that there were a lot of, uh, questions. Like I said, when I was in city, in the city council meetings, people who had voted their whole life called me up and said, I'm not sure exactly the best way to do this. And so I've never had that before. Uh, of course, I've never been elected official and had people calling me up. But sometimes if you are, and I was on a community council for eleven years, sometimes I knew a little bit about the dynamics. And so I would have people occasionally call me about an individual and ask them about, you know, to vet them out. But I, I've never had so many questions as when ranked choice hit.
Yeah. So I think, uh, we'll just leave it on this last point. So I, I think that there are good aspects of, of ranked choice voting, getting, you know, having more people participate and perhaps be involved in, in the eventual winning candidate is, I think, is a plus. The problem is that, that this system in my mind, um, proposes is not everybody casts more than one vote. And, and, and when you don't, um, then you're, you know, and, and you're eliminated early, you're, you're not participating in any part of the process, really. In, in, especially as it gets down to a final two. And so.
With, with all due respect, that's what I was trying to get at by saying, we do not know on eighty percent of the ballots, whether that's the case. Um, and it's, it's really hard to make that type of a deduction based on so much that's just unknown.
We know how many people didn't cast more than a single ballot.
Um, that's, no, that, that, that's, that's, that's not the case.
Thirty percent is not the case. Is that?
It's eight, you know, you have, uh, it, for example, in our, in our last mayoral contest, seventy-eight percent of the ballots, we don't know. And that's because a good chunk of them, six thousand of them, sixty-five hundred of them were placed for either the first place or the second place, whoever ended up in those two spots. So you don't know from that, I mean, that's two-thirds of them right now, whether they ever had a second because they never moved. Um,
After the first round of voting, you can tell how many ballots drop out.
You do. And so you, you knew from, um, those that cast votes for the fifth place, there were, um, three hundred that moved on and forty-five that dropped off. And the second time around, you had fifty-five more that dropped off. Um, the only, those were all exhausted. You had forty-four, fifty-five, yep. But the, um, I, I, I will note that Y two K did do a survey on the subject. And the self-reported numbers they had was that, uh, most people's said they, the average for the, they said they filled out, the average of the ones that responded was three point seven. Except in Sandy, they actually went to four point eight. They also had a kind of a field of eight. Um, and most of the, how many did you vote for? Those numbers aren't indicative of the it, but a lot of people did go further. Um, but again, we just don't know on so many because we can't see, we don't actually get to see the.
So you're right, we don't know, which is part of the problem.
Well, I, I have three points I would like to make quickly, uh, Mayor, I may have a moment. Um, so, um, you know, one of the things. Um, so, uh, you know, one of the things about rank choice voting that I think is very po- positive in our time of, uh. Politically challenging, uh, a lot of, uh, polarization is that we know that, uh, the campaigns, uh, tend to run, uh, cleaner and friendlier and. Candidates realize that they need to work across the aisle, uh, in our case, in municipal elections, of course, they're nonpartisan, but nonetheless. It, uh, it fosters, I think, goodwill to have rank choice voting. Uh, another point that, uh.
Uh, well, I will note on the survey that Y two K did. Sixty, sixty-one, sixty-three, um, didn't notice a difference to be.
Right, I mean, we're, and, and surveys have showed that, that rank choice voting was very positively received, so there may. There may have been some anecdotal evidence as Councilman Peterson, uh, reported that. Uh, some people were confused, but the vast majority when surveyed, uh. Post-election said that they did not find rank choice voting, uh, confusing. Um, and, uh. Something I'd like to understand from the council is, is how we feel about this House Bill one seventy-one. Um, I would like to see our lobbyists, uh, lobby against, uh, the state, uh. Legislature dictating to the city municipalities, whether we choose, whether we can use rank choice voting or not. I think it should be. Up to each city, whether they choose that, and it should not be. Again, something dictated by the legislature, I'd like to know what my fellow. Colleagues on the council think about that.
Can I real quickly address, uh, just to let you know from the league, the Utah League of Cities and Towns perspective? From, from what I've heard, they've, they've been, um. They're always advocating for, um, cities to have control, so a choice is related to that. They're not expending a lot of political capital on this issue as a league, but, but. Based on their priorities is to allow cities a choice and allow cities. Rather than being dictated what needs to happen, it, they've taken that stance, so it's been very active in. Lobbying for that, but that's kind of been there.
So has U L C T come out against this, opposing this House Bill one seventy-one?
I don't think they have, they've done that, if they've been more neutral, but, but their statement was more of. Give cities control, don't take away, to, to make their own decision.
Well, I know per se, that's why they exist, U L C T, I mean, that's a large part of why they exist. Um, but I'm, I'm interested to know how Conwood Heights, uh, city council looks at this and, and whether we want to instruct our lobbyists, uh, to. To, you know, oppose.
Direction to the lobby.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I thought it was a good thing the bill was held.
Yeah.
Um, cause I do think it should be up to us regardless of what the decision is, so on that basis. If they've got time and they're talking to somebody and can say, yeah, let's keep that held and let's not worry about it.
I was actually there and watched the committee and, and it was very interesting to me, the people that. They had a pro and con that would get up one after another. And eighty percent of the people that were pro all had ties to working for rank choice voting. I don't know if you knew that. I spoke to one of them after and.
You mean that were in favor of House Bill one seventy-one?
No, they were against it, they were in favor of rank choice voting, every one of them. About eighty-five percent that I know of, that maybe higher, had direct ties to working for rank chose, for the choice voting. I found that a little bit. Ingenuous as far as, of course, if that's your employment, because rank choice actually got ten million dollars to start, to get that. Money to, to start, and so the, the founder, person that actually spoke, of course, if you listen to any of that. He spoke, but then about seven or eight, I think that were wanted rank choice voting. Uh, also spoke, but most of them were directly tied to working for rank choice, and so that kind of. Made me wonder how good of a control group you had in that situation. But, uh, it, it is, it is a complex issue, but, uh.
I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily very strange, because a lot of times in a public hearing, if people approve your budget. They're gonna, they won't show up and say anything, but boy, if they don't, you'll hear it.
But the people that were, didn't like rank choice, they were individuals. In the sense, that, that's what I mean, the contrast was interesting that somebody trying to protect their livelihood. That works for rank choice versus people that had gone through it and had neg- negative experience.
I would like to point out that a pilot program, the very purpose of a pilot program is to gain data. So since we're only one year into what was, uh, conceived originally, I believe to run through twenty twenty-six. I think it's premature to see the state legislature nip this in the bud when we were barely starting to gain some data. And again, that's what a pilot program is, it's designed to, to gather data. So I, I, I would like to urge our council to. Uh, choose to have our, instruct our lobbyists, uh, to be vocal that Conwood Heights opposes this House Bill one seven one.
I think that's, that's.
Yeah, I was gonna say, one of the things that, uh. We run into, I don't remember, I have so many thoughts about you here, um, in looking at this. In rank choice voting, it also allows for individuals that may not have the same connections in a community. To be able to, you know, express themselves and run for public office. And have an opportunity through whatever mechanisms they have to be able to at least be a part of the process. Um, when we look at the numbers, we look at, um, there's so many variables in there and the misinformation that was out there, now it's up to us, I guess, to decipher. What's real and what's not real, and to be able to take all these different numbers and, and. Extrapolate the variables out of that to get a clear picture, and that's not gonna happen, um, very easily. Because the numbers are coming from everywhere, right? We've got the consideration of the cities that mayors talk to and the, um. The legislature, as they're working on things, and also what the different municipalities are figuring out themselves right now. They can say one thing, but have their councils met on these issues and have those discussions. We don't know that. So for us to be able to say, we're gonna make any kind of decisions, or at least leaning whom we are another, is really difficult to do.
Well, if, if it was completely independent right now, I would lean towards, let's do it again, because I think it's. Probably the correct thing to do. However, I also understand that there is. A lot of distrust and accusations on transparency and just. Things, and that has to be balanced against an overall trust. In the system itself, in the election process, and with people who are counting the votes and tabulating. Because what we don't want is people, you know, just that. Lack of confidence in the system, um, has to be balanced against. Long-term as well, and so, no, I'm not ready to move definitively one way or another, because it's not independent, it just. Unfortunately, just this one time, it, it's, it's complex, so I would like to wait and hopefully see that this bill just died on the vine. And then we can, uh, once we know whether, because the, the discussion becomes moot if the legislature kills it.
Agreed. Here's part of my problem with collecting data that Sean talked about, we cannot get that, that's protected data.
Right, and so.
So why, when you said, you said it was stupid, is that the word you used?
That was.
You corrected yourself and softened it the second time.
No, I, I, the way they programmed the R C D tabulation software was stupid, because it wouldn't do a two, two-person race, and I will stand by that.
Right, but my, my question is, the data that we can't see and will never see is protected. We will never know that, and I wish we could. Nobody wants the state to take our control of our city. And that is one thing that was crystal clear is. I'm afraid the state's going to take some of our, usurp some of our authority on other things, we know that. And so nobody wants the state to take on the H B one seventy-one, I think everyone would say. We want to decide as a city.
Yeah, so we need to move on, let me last, add my last qualifier, that I, I would not be in favor of, of this, uh, rank choice voting. And, uh, and it comes down to. You, you, you do not know how many people will file. And, and it's unrealistic, like Sandy proved, to, to research nine candidates. And, and, and part of what happens in a primary process. Is it narrows it down, that the same amount of people can, can participate in, in the election process, bring trace voting. They just would get narrowed down through the primaries, so that you have two clear-cut candidates. Where, where everybody's gonna vote, everybody, you, you know, they want their voice heard, they're voting in the, in the general. For one person or the other, but I, I understand that we've got lots of strong opinions, and so that's part of what this.
Vote in the primary, because they may not get a choice for who they like and, and, but.
It's a good point. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Item B under staff report is a, a five-year. Uh, road maintenance plan update, we talked about this a little bit in our, uh. Uh, retreat last week, and I think, uh, our local works director matchup has some updates, if I'm not.
We do.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
No, you can't.
I'm going to. So. One of the things that I wanted to share with you, I, I've appreciated Matt and Adam. And what they do and their expertise on the engineering side and really looking at the roads. I've had the opportunity to go out with both Matt and Adam and review some of the roads that they've been evaluating and, and. Putting on the, uh, five-year plan. One of the things, since we talked at the retreat. That I've asked them to do is, is scale down at least some of their recommendations, at least in the first part of the five-year plan. To be more aligned with the funding that we have had historically for this. Counsel obviously can decide if they want to do more than that, but I, I just want to say that we've got two. Great experts here that know our roads amazingly well and know what the issues are. And know what the concerns are, and, and I've appreciated that expertise as we move forward, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, and I failed to mention, sorry, that Adam was here with Adam Ginsburg, so thanks, Adam.
Yeah, so mayor and council, I'm gonna let Adam take this away, but just to give you a brief introduction. Um, we are at the end of our first original five-year plan, Adam will explain that a little bit more. We approached the previous council, if you will, the other mayor, a couple of years ago. With a first initial approach to the fi- next, next set of five-year plans, if you will. Um, we've been working on that this year, trying to get things ready for the retreat and for you as a council, so. I'm gonna let Adam go ahead and share what we found out and, uh, give you an opportunity to ask questions if you'd like. But this is the direction we're heading, based on, like Tim has mentioned, some information that we've been given. Uh, at least dollar-wise to work with, and so this is where we are.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Um, so we're passing around, uh, just some maps of the, uh. Of the, of the previous plan and then also the recommendations. Um, I also included with council member Varel, the presentation, if any other members would like, uh. A copy of this presentation, we're happy to provide that. Um, so just to give you some background, um, in twenty eighteen, uh, the city council. Uh, enacted a five-year maintenance plan for all the local roads in the city. Um, the goals of those plans were to provide treatment to as many roads as possible, to all the city roads. And to essentially to stabilize the existing pavement conditions where they were to slow deterioration. Um, it was a big investment and it, it did provide a lot of benefit to the city roads. Um, we are in year five of the pavement plan, the year twenty-two, twenty-three, um, and there are still projects. That are gonna happen this spring that will conclude that initial five-year plan. Um, the proposed plan would run from twenty-three to the year two thousand twenty-eight. Um, the goals of this plan are a little different than, or at least the proposed goals of this plan are a little different. Than the initial one, we've, um, removed the original plan, we removed some neighborhoods. That it wasn't appropriate to do maintenance on, and this plan is attempting to address. The neighborhoods that were removed from the previous plan and also to continue to provide, uh, citywide maintenance on all the roads. Um, just to give you a brief overview, you know, of types of roadway improvements that are available to us. Uh, there are two different types, the, or two main groups of these roadway improvements, you have maintenance. And you have reconstruction, and it really depends on, you know, what condition the road is in. The, the map is showing, this is the, the P C I that shows the, the condition of a road over time. And, you know, maintenance is done primarily early in the road's life. To prevent it from falling into, uh, a lower condition where it would require a much larger investment. Um, where it's on the magnitude of six times, uh, a maintenance cost to do reconstruction. You know, typical maintenance includes slurry sealing, crack sealing, and chip seal. And those are, I think you guys are all pretty familiar with those types of improvements. Um, and reconstruction, our main tools for reconstruction are, you know, to remove the asphalt with rotor milling. And put new down, and then a complete reconstruction would be to completely take the asphalt off. And then to also either remove or re- rehabilitate. The, the, the subbed or the subgrade where the, the road sits on. And you can either reuse the material and add some cement, or you can basically rebuild the road from scratch. Um, so those are some of the different types of improvements for road reconstruction. You know, this map right here is showing the completed. Five-year plan that started in twenty eighteen and is concluding this fiscal year. The, the blue is the, the road that were done by slurry seal, the red are the roads that were done by chip seal. Uh, and the black is the roads that were either overlaid or reconstructed completely. Um, and then you can also see there are areas that are green that we'll touch on in one moment. So in the last five years, the total amount that's been completed, I don't know why there's zoom things up there. I don't, it's not even showing on my screen.
Oh, that has products.
So the, the total completed slurry seal, um, is, is there a way to move them?
No.
Oh, Matt. So twelve million, one hundred thirty thousand square feet of slurry seal. Which is approximately sixty percent of the entire city, so in the last five years, we've slurried sixty percent of the city. We've also done a number of chip seal on some of the collective roads. And those are shown in red, and we did two million and almost one hundred thousand square feet of chip seal. And mill and overlay, which is the areas in black, there were two main reconstructions done in the last five years. The one on the south side of the city is Scottish Drive, um, and the Alta Hills area. And on the north side is the Wine Sap area, um, and Rabbit Club Drive. And those are shown in black, and they represented about four point five percent of the city. Um, lastly, there were also in this same time period, there was another two million square feet. Of roadway improvements that were completed that were outside of that five-year plan. You know, those included, um, Fort Union Boulevard, twenty-seven hundred east. Twenty-three hundred east and Highland Drive, or a portion of Highland Drive from Bengal to Creek. We, most of that was completed based off of, uh. Uh, funding that the city received, either from Salt Lake County or the quarter of the quarter. But a total of that is about eighty-five percent of the city was done, improved, um, in the last five years. The areas in green were in the original five-year plan, but they were removed, um, because essentially. That it was not appropriate, the surface treatment, the maintenance that we had proposed for that. Was not appropriate for the road due to the condition that the road was in. So, but this is, and the end, and I should point out that this represents the fifth year. That will, so Highland Drive is gonna be done this spring and, and also, um. Thirteen hundred east will be done, and those, and that will conclude, uh, this current plan. So moving to the areas that were excluded from the five-year plan. We have here Prospector Drive. And you can see, this is a representation of kind of what that neighborhood is looking like. You can see a lot of fatigue cracking, which is, I can't even make that. All right, so you can see a lot of the fatigue cracking. And there's also some ravelling, which is an indication of, uh, either a force upgrade. Or we may potentially drainage issues, fatigue cracking usually happens, I mean. It happens from loading on the road from the cars and just repeatedly happening over and over again. Um, and this is, you know, a, a very poor condition for a road. So we've showing in the next five-year plan, um, a complete reconstruction. So we've showing in the next five year plan, um, a complete reconstruction of the asphalt. Uh, that would include uh, concrete improvements as well. Uh, the other area that, another area that's been removed. Uh, also the town drive area. This is located over on twenty-six hundred east, just east twenty-six hundred east. And north of Bengal Boulevard. It's also was removed from year one of the five year plan. So it's been, both those projects have been moved to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And you can see this would be the uh, the proposal for. The first year, it's showing Prospector Drive of reconstruction and also Town Drive reconstruction. We're also showing uh, maintenance for other roads. We have a a set cost for that. And we're also attempting to, we're also making sure that we're taking care of the main roads. So Bengal Boulevard is shown on this one uh, for a chip seal. And you'll notice as we go through this, we've, we have um, committed to. Uh, two point eight million dollars as this as this upper limit. And so it has reflected in this uh, in our proposal.
That's a change from the three point four from the retreat then, right?
It is, it's, and we'll talk about, we can talk about at the end how we had to reduce some of the.
Okay.
Um, the assumptions, obviously for maintenance, uh, maintenance will just be. The roadway will include the concrete ADA ramps. When you do reconstruction on a road instead of maintenance, any kind of modification, you're required by ADA. To to meet the requirements of the condition, so the the curb ramps must meet the requirements. Of the ramp at the time that the road was originally built. So in the most of these cases, the roads were built in the eighties and nineties. So they would, if there's no curb ramp, then ADA ramps would be required.
Adam, if I remember, Matt mentioned a little bit about how when we've seen a need that was. Called out, we fixed that, repaired that, and now we'll start to do that in each one of these processes.
Yeah, we've, we've gone through and we've, and we have made sure that the roads are. In are are maintaining their condition that we we really kind of. We did a lot of slurry seal and we're, we're confident that this slurry seal will hold up in in most of these cases. But in these areas that the road is really requiring a much more significant investment, that's where we would like to focus.
I'm just referring to the ramps.
When we, when we do reconstruction. We're required to change them by law. That's a mandate, that's a federal mandate. The others, if we just maintain it. It can stay status quo, but if we do get, yeah, but if we do get calls. For specifics, we have to take action as well. We can't, we can't not take action.
Sorry to clarify that.
No, that's why, yeah, the ADA is required for reconstruction.
Gotcha.
And that's one of the reasons why it ends up being such a larger investment is because you're looking at. You don't want to spend just the money on the road and then leave the rest because it it's all affected, the curbing gutter affects the sub grade. And it affects the pavement and then the ADA is.
Not re, it's reconstruction rather than ma- maintenance.
It is, it's, it's.
Right, I was gonna clarify that, because.
Yeah, I knew.
Difference here was. The ones that are slated for reconstruction, that's gonna include your ADA ramps and the other things as well, maintenance.
The the cost, yeah.
Yeah, and just to point out, so on Prospector, these are preliminary costs, they're estimates. Um, and we'll talk about that in a second, but it does include the curb and gutter. Um, it includes waterways, drive approaches. And the curb and gutter is a, it's estimated off of the total square footage of the project. Um, and we're showing a four inch mill and overlay. And a road recon, the road reconstructions of the neighborhood and the mills in the uh. In that straightaway where the the speed bumps are. So. So we also have, we have Pineview Drive. Um, this area was removed. And this is located off of uh, Fort Union Boulevard up by thirtieth. So we'll get to year two. Year two is showing Pineview Drive. And Fort Union and Highland. You can see it's also pretty close to two point eight million. And we're, and we've also included the maintenance.
What is the mill and overlay with fabric, I mean?
So the fabric is. Um, well, this is more, so this, what this is showing, two and a half inch mill, so that's a smaller one. Than taking the full road. So what you can do is you can put down this pavement fabric. That will slow the cracks from coming up from the existing pavement.
When you, when you put asphalt on something, the cracks, the next year will show up, the exact cracks that are underneath it.
Yeah.
So the idea is to try to bridge it. It's a cost savings if, depends on the depth of the cracks and whatnot, but it's. It's a cost savings to avoid complete reconstruction.
We've done it on a a number of the overlay projects, like it's on Fort Union, it's on Highland. Um, so it it definitely increases the life. So year two is the year three. Um, so year three to year five is in terms of reconstruction. If you go look at your map, you'll notice there's a a very large area that's the Stephenson Bridgewater. Brighton Way area. That was, that was entirely removed from, from the slurry seal, um, I think two years ago. Um, that area is is large, it's a a significant investment, there's a lot of asphalt. Um, what we're attempting to do is, as we improve this area. Is we've kind of broken it up into the next three years of this plan, year three to year five. So this is representing Stephenson Drive. Um, and it is shown, you know. About two hundred twenty-four thousand square feet of road reconstruction. And we're still putting uh, the maintenance for the other roads that were in year three of the original plan. So our intention is to make sure that we're still. We ha- we haven't really shuffled the roads around much, we're keeping them in the same rotation. So we'll look at those roads, year one roads, and then at this one it'll be year three roads. So you have Stephenson in year three, uh, Brighton Way. You can see a lot of the fatigue cracking and the longitudinal cracking. Um. And also thirty-five hundred east, twenty-three hundred east as as main road improvements.
You'd be doing less cracking fifth and slurries that year due to the bigger reconstruction, makes sense.
Yeah, we're, we've, we have, some of the main roads are in pretty good shape, we're, we're looking at. We want to keep them that way. So that's why Fort Union is is really in need of an improvement. It was, it was done maybe six, seven years ago and. And we really feel like it again. Twenty-three hundred east, we did a chip seal. In twenty eighteen, so we think it'd be good to do another one in about, you know, a couple of years. And that would really, you know, keep that one in pretty good shape. Um, and then Bridgewater, which is. Up by, you know, it's the same area. Uh, this is where it's up by Quarry Hill Circle. And so this reconstruction would include. You know, you can see right here, this ADA ramp would need to be rebuilt. Um, but a lot of cracking on these roads. Um, the last one is Lower Siesta, which is scheduled for this year. And we've looked at it, it has a a utility cut that was put down. Um, that that traverses the entire neighborhood. Um, and it's also uh, getting in poor condition. So this would be scheduled for, I believe, twenty twenty-seven, when we would do a mill and overlay. So here.
The only one you have the detailed breakout cost for the reconstruction was in year one.
Um, I have, well, what I did. We, I combined, yeah, I took that Prospector and yeah, these are. It, the the issue is projecting five years out when we're really in a. A climate where the, where the cost could go either way, they could keep going up. Or they could stabilize, or they, I guess they could go back down. Um, so we've looked at um, what UDOT's doing with their inflation index. And I'll get to that in one moment.
So if I can, just really quick, the the details are somewhat details. I mean, as these projects come up and we and we get them approved and they go forward. We we really narrow it down. I mean, we we penciled in the project at that point, so. The numbers you're looking at are definitely budgetary numbers that we have to work with. But as it gets closer, we're able to drill down a little tighter and get better numbers on that, so. The details, we put them up here so we could, in essence, show you, we did put a little thought into it. It's not, it's not just a number we made up. We did put a little thought into what's out in these areas.
And unlike Prospector, we've looked into it, you know, quite a bit in terms of the, you know, what would need to be done. Because it would be the first year and this one would be, you know, almost six year, almost five year.
Is there still unknown opportunities for grants to participate in some of these? I know we have some regional roads on there.
Yeah, we will still attempt to go for grants. There's still, but I don't know what the quarter of the quarter will will end up being. Uh, but that was where some of that funding came from. Um, the Salt Lake County Active Transportation, which is, actually, we're doing UDOT TAP today, but Salt Lake County Grants. So there's definitely opportunities that we can look at.
Well, would active transportation monies go toward these projects?
Um, well, that was for twenty-three hundred east. We added the bike lanes, um, the the Bofford Bike Lands. And we at the same time did a chip seal um, all the way into Holland, so. So it is, it is possible, yes.
We've done that with Fort Union a couple of times, actually.
Yeah, Fort Union, that was the same.
We had those shovel-ready projects, although they kind of. Used to be at the legislature where you, if you kept your ears and eyes open, you might be able to. Come into some money, but they've kind of changed the way that's, you know, distributed now.
So this is the summary of the five years. Um, red is is twenty-three, twenty-four. You can see the legend, the dash is the reconstruction and the solid is the maintenance. And then we also have a map that that you guys have a copy of that shows the the main roads as well. That are, that we're proposing to to uh, improve.
That reconstruction is on.
So Fort Union Boulevard is, the only one that is shown as a reconstruction would be Highland Drive. From Bengal Boulevard to Fort Union Boulevard. And I think I actually skipped over that, that is in year. That is in year two, so we're proposing a mill and overlay with fabric on Highland Drive.
Does that match up with the intersection?
These, the intersection project will will basically reduce the amount that we will need.
It'll tie it in.
Yeah, we'll tie it.
But we're not being completely ridiculous.
No, we won't, we won't be redoing that. So in summary, you know, we've moved the focus to include more neighborhood reconstruction. To address um, roads that have low pavement condition. They will, you know, they include ADA uh, requirements, curb and gutter. Um, the estimated cost that we've, that we have been working on. Are based off of, you can see here, this is. The UDOT recommended inflation projection. This is what UDOT uses for their pre-construction estimates. Um, the the, this is the latest one, I believe, it's June of twenty twenty-two. Um, what it's showing, you know, you can, you can read it, but it's. What we ended up using was the low recommendation. Um, and you can see that, so that's what we did was I took. The bid prices from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And then I I've used this inflationary number to come up with projections into the next five years. It's probably, what we'll end up doing is re. Looking at this every single year and making further adjustments.
Hopefully downward.
Hopefully downward.
Each year you have an opportunity to approve the next year's budget and. Like I said, we'll always present every year the next year as it comes up.
And what this shows is from two thousand three to uh, twenty twenty-six, the. The construction cost index for UDOT at least. Um, the red is the the high one, so we would have used the brown one. That would be the low. But you can kind of see the, the high, the future highs is, you know, very high, so. But I believe that this, I mean, they're going to send out a new one. This is from June of twenty-two. So there should be a new one, uh, probably later this year, if you don't mind, yes. So that concludes the the.
Back on real quick.
What's up? To this one?
Adam, I've got a question on the cost of oil.
So basically, since we incorporated the cost of our. We were one, two, five, and now we're three, two, seven, so we. Three times as much to fix a road now than it was back then?
Well, this is the percent increase year over year.
So it's this cost index, right? So it's not a. A dollar in two thousand three is.
It's the average rate of increase from two thousand three, so. What if you, you can see from two thousand three to June two thousand twenty-one. The average rate of increase was six point, six point eight percent.
Same amount of work, correct?
Oh, to do the same amount of work, yeah.
And that was the average increase, that's the, that's the one.
That's labor and materials, right? So we're dealing with two different.
Yes, labor is what's driving this.
Right.
Um, according to what, this is what UDOT has said is for the contributors to the inflation.
Doesn't seem like oil when it goes up, it doesn't go up exponentially, you know, on your cost, which is interesting.
Asphalt hasn't been.
Asphalt hasn't been the factor.
It really has, yeah. Concrete and labor and concrete's gotten better, so.
Well, Matt and Adam, thank you, that's very informative. As a council, I don't think we make more important decisions than the road, our citizens strive on, and so. Thank you for all your hard work and for informing us and and. For uh, this this five year plan and we'll move forward accordingly, so. Thank you. Don't go too far, Matt, so the the, and I don't know if Adam's standing as well, the next item. Is our Utah, our UDOT uh, transportation alternative plans. Uh, and so we're gonna have you, you could present to us.
Okay, well, real quick, while these are being handed out, we've received notification that. We have to have an application in for transportation alternative plans. By the first of March, so we're bringing this to you now. So there can be a little discussion and if there's one more council meeting before the first of March. That if we want to come back and discuss anything, we can to look at closer. But we are presenting tonight, and Adam will do this, um, we're presenting. We brought forward three projects um, for your consideration. Um, these definitely are not in any priority list, they are just projects that we need. We've looked at, we've talked about, they've been on our list before and we're bringing them back for your consideration. And for your discussion, so I'll, with that, I'll, I'll let Adam keep earning his keep.
Say one time, this is for funds?
This is the.
So, so this is uh, UDOT TAP. And what that essentially is, is you guys are familiar with the TAP process, it's part of the.
Remind me what TAP stands for.
Transportation.
Alternative program.
That's what I was asking.
And it's part of the the tip, which is a federal program, that's the WASAT front. But UDOT receives a portion of that money every year that they convert to state funds. And they will distribute that to the cities. So it's, it's money that will go through, the city will administer these funds, not UDOT.
Doesn't have the same federal requirements that are on there.
Yeah.
That would be on the other monies we get.
Previous projects that have received these funds include the East Storting Canal. And the big, the connector trail for Big Cottonwood Canyon, the.
Porcupine and.
Or the Porcupine, yeah, the one that's by the Porcupine. And then I know there's another.
I'm sorry, by.
Process Street.
Oh, the gap, and also the the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail, you know, where we.
Side of Fort Union.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's a done deal.
Yeah, it's, it's built.
He's saying these are monies we've received in the past.
Right, I'm just trying to uh, see in my mind's eye exactly what uh, what. Uh, alternative transportation you you're referring to that's across from the Porcupine.
So there.
Port Trail.
So I can show you if you'd like. It was a connection, what it, what the project was, was a connection from the Park and Ride to the Big Cottonwood Canyon. Trail that that goes underneath Wausatch Boulevard. So we connected a a parking lot so people could use the trail.
And so it was going, what goes underneath Wausatch Boulevard, not, because I'm, I'm on the surface, but.
This is the one on the surface.
Yeah.
That's where we just did, completed this one about three years ago, two or three years ago.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Um, and then also the Gap Trail, the Big Conwood. The trail in front of the houses is also.
One Big Conwood Road.
On Big Conwood Canyon. Um, so this brought, this uh.
You have your. Do you have, I don't know. You're looking at your computer like something's on.
No, nothing's on. No, not even with Matt, yeah. So I have the good language of the grant. So this grant will provide up to three hundred thousand dollars. In a sixty, forty split. So UDOT will provide up to six hundred thousand dollars, or up to three, three hundred thousand dollars. And the city would contribute forty percent, you know. Forty percent, so that's a maximum.
About five hundred thousand. If we get three hundred, we would pay two.
Yeah, we get three, we pay two. If the project's more, we pay more, right? UDOT will only pay up to three hundred thousand with this grant.
So in essence, it's a maximum of a five hundred thousand dollar project.
You, well, unless the city would like to contribute additional funding.
We can go higher. Yeah, we can go higher. It's just. It's three hundred thousand max, UDOT will contribute. We go up to a million, they'll give us three hundred. We've got to pay the seven hundred.
Um, so eligible projects are any bike facilities. Either on or off the road, any trails, any sidewalks. Including city sidewalks, not necessarily state routes. Um, anything that would. Vehicle cause, wildlife, mortality, safe routes to schools. And any, then it says other qualifying town.
Is there a maximum number of projects we can, we can talk about?
So what, so whether it says is one project, only one project application may be selected from each municipality. And that, that's the language they use. Basically, what that means is we could submit more than one. But we're likely only to get one, so if we do submit two, we should probably prioritize.
Interesting.
Um, we do have. What we did was um provided some maps of potential tap projects. These are not necessarily the ones we're recommending. They are just ones that we have submitted in the past. Yeah.
So are we, are you asking for a recommendation from us after this?
What we're asking for is, so this application is due March first. We're asking for the council to provide input. On which project they would like us to submit for. And.
Directions.
Yeah, direction. What we can, what this one, the first project that we've showing is seventeen hundred East. This project is on the west side. Of seventeen hundred East, it would be considered a safe routes to school project. Um, it fills in gaps in the existing network. Um, we've. It is going, what would you say about this project?
Oh, this is, so on this project, as you're aware, the council approved um up to three hundred ninety-five thousand for construction of this. We are moving forward. It's designed, and I, I think I brought this up at the retreat. We are working through some property acquisition issues.
I thought that was, or, okay, I'm sorry, I was reversed.
Seventeen hundred East sidewalk, so. This one we're bringing forward, it's an opportunity, if you want, this is not us. Saying, but if you want, it's a chance to receive up to the three hundred thousand dollars and we can. Take our budget. Return funds back to the uh general fund. And or however that works and then pay the two hundred as opposed to the four hundred we have budgeted now.
So the total cost is under five, though we wouldn't get up to three hundred, correct?
Well, there's, that's our estimated budget right now.
There was also a property, was that included property?
So could you remind all of us where the schools are? That is to say. Are your children that cross Fort Union Boulevard, yeah, there's canyon, but did it, do the uh kids that attend uh this, this?
Yeah, so this.
Would, would they be taking this route to?
Yes, that's why it's a safe route, yes. That it's to the, if you, Ellen, if you point at the crossroad. Said, yeah, farther to the, you know, you've got Santa Fe.
Yeah, honestly.
Yeah.
Santa Fe is over here.
Yes, they come down, go down the sidewalk and then they would turn, see the cross at seventy-two hundred. Ellen, go a little to the left, keep going. Come down there and then straight down. Yeah, right there.
So there are children that that flow this way.
A lot of, yeah, a lot of children. That's, I've been working on this for three years. I've been pestering Matt a little bit about this and and.
And you know, you'll have a lot of kids on those, on Santa Fe and River Hills that use that.
I'm a little bit curious. So then uh when they get here, we would rework this to to show. Better crosswalk system here for them to get across this.
Yeah, they would cross, they would cross over and use the school crossing, the crosswalks.
Do we have a crossing guard stationed that far down, Robbie?
I don't.
At the raised crosswalk.
It is on the safe routes.
Yeah.
This school's plan, there's snap money.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I expect that.
This one was, we brought forward just as an option to looking at cost. That's why this one's being brought forward.
Perfect, and next.
Uh, the next one we will talk about is the thirteen hundred East Fox Signal. Um, this one is. A fox signal is the, it's an actual red light for pedestrian. Uh, the nearest signalized intersection. On thirteen hundred East, you have one on Fort Union. And then another one on Park Center. So this would increase. Um, pedestrian use from the office park into the commercial district. Um, it's a.
It would at least give them the option to make their crossing safer.
It would give them the option, would hopefully.
I don't know how much it may increase or decrease, but at least give them an option.
So uh, so that, so the usage you you foresee is pred- predominantly from people coming from the office complex?
Office is over to the restaurants at lunch, yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Now, this project, uh, interject really quick. We applied for this two, maybe three years ago under council direction. We scored okay on it. But we're bringing it back as another chance to look at it, if that's something that, at some point. The councils were interested in this. Uh, anyway, to capture that office and bring it over the lunchtime crowd over to our side of the road and.
Did I miss the estimated cost for that hawk?
Um, well, we would, the estimated cost that we have at this time is is about three hundred fifty thousand. That's based off of the. The hawk that we're doing on Fort Union. Um, but we, what, what we plan on doing is you guys giving us some, you know, recommendation and we'll go. And prepare something for the next council. Uh, the third project is on Creek Road. It might be a little confusing, but what it's showing is.
The orange line is the important one.
Yeah, the orange line is the proposed sidewalk, curb and gutter and bike lane.
Can you mind orienting us all a little bit more? Is this the same? So this is basically the bottom and then this is the.
Creek is right there.
That's Willow Creek, uh, going to Willow Creek country.
Yeah, here is the creek right here.
Wait, I'm sorry, Willow Creek is, I thought down there.
Yeah, but it is, that's the bottom.
An actual creek is there even though the subdivision is.
Okay. And. Is there a way that you measure pedestrian use of uh of this particular? Uh, it it's such a steep hill. I, I personally ride my bike and drive this on a very regular basis because that's how I get to my son's house. And I'm just. Uh, I don't recall seeing pedestrians on, coming up. To come to these neighborhoods here or vice versa, so I'm just. Wondering how you, how you measure the usage and and identify it as a priority for this project.
Well, this project was. I, I believe the previous council had identified it as a priority. When Watson, Ivory Homes built Watson Hollow, they constructed a sidewalk. Along Creek Road, but they terminated it. At the, at their frontage. Um, that's what this picture right here showing. So currently, this is, and this picture is a couple of years old. But the sidewalk just ends like that and there's a giant wall of dirt. Um, so the plan is to bring the sidewalk out into the shoulder area of the road. We do have some property issues that would need to be dealt with. But we would also, the bike lane also kind of tapers out at this point because it narrows down because of the, the bridge. So the, this project would be improving the safety. Due to the, you know, the steep hill. I don't have usage numbers though. Of how many people are actually walking.
We have a hard time with that because we don't have. Anything.
I know there's a, a few people in the neighborhood down around Oak Creek.
This has been, this, since I've been here, this has been a priority, not really, a, a discussion every year for councils. To tie the sidewalks in. Um, so this is, once again, we're bringing it up to you.
Did we get more discussion on this one?
Um, I put uh four hundred fifty V. The problem, or not the problem, the, the cost would be a retaining wall that would need to be built. Um, and potentially.
Potential property.
Potential property as well.
Did you say four fifty, huh?
Four fifty, yeah.
Can I ask you if uh? If a potential hawk. For the high school, uh, would that go, come from tap funds if, if we apply?
It would be an eligible project.
It would be eligible.
But we are, we are using, if you recall, that one point one.
We already have funding in place.
We have funding and we're gonna try to tie that in to that one point one at the high school.
Perfect.
So, so one other thing, and this was brought up by Councilmember Brill. I think you have a slide on another. This was not including your packet, but it was brought to our attention. It's something we've talked about in the past on Danish.
So, and this, and again, this map is. Is old. But. Where you're looking at is Danish Road.
North, south, which way are we going?
So we're looking, south is, east is up. North is to the. Yeah, and on the west side of Danish, uh, at about eighty-six hundred. About eighty-six hundred south, the sidewalk ends. These properties are are much lower than the road. Um, and there is a gap in the existing sidewalk. The council's looked at this many times before. What's, I, the, this road has additional. Um, vertical curve issues that would need to be addressed. So this is a potentially, if we were to do it. Um, depending on what we were proposing to do, the cost could be much higher. And that's kind of, I'm not sure exactly where, what would be the best approach for Danish.
Could you expand a little bit on what your, the vertical?
So, so right here, Dameborg, the, this is kind of a high point, but there's sight distance issues. The road is also kind of narrow and what this is proposing. Is to put the sidewalk in the shoulder. And again, it's just a matter of what the council would like to see happen. Do we want to? Uh, provide bike lanes and widen the road a bit, um, because this is showing it. And that would probably increase the cost where we'd have a sidewalk and a bike lane. Um. Well, another thing we should bring up is this. Uh, address right here. I've got a building permit last year. And as part of that building permit, they're required to put in frontage improvements. That will be basically the sidewalk will be right about here. But we haven't seen that actually construction take place. So that would reduce the cost if that was, if that construction happens. So this is definitely a, a project that would qualify for the TAP.
Do you have any estimate on what we might be looking at cost on?
Depending on, depending on the improvements that we did, if we just focused on the sidewalk. And built the retaining walls, there is uh right-of-way requirements. That you potentially would need, but you're looking at maybe six to eight hundred thousand. There's, I should point out, there's a second area as well that was part of this. And that is a little bit to the north. So we've got. A proposed four-foot sidewalk. And we would need to purchase property from this, from this resident.
So along a little way, approximately. So eighty-three, seventy-six, so.
Yeah, this is, this is to the north. Um, at about maybe a block or two away. Those are the two large gaps on Danish.
Um, if I may eject, uh, because I have so many constituents who press so hard for improvements on Danish. I. I believe that, that the um width of the road uh. Would be, we would benefit from keeping it narrow. Um. And where there are curves coming up with either some chicanes and or uh. Dramatic reduction on vehicular speed. Because again, the greatest danger to pedestrians and bicycle vehicles. Speed. And I would like to recommend to my council colleagues. That we uh. Prioritize this sidewalk improvement along Danish. Because it does have heavy usage by people that live as far south as the Green Hills and Giverny area. To, you know, north uh up into Bengal Boulevard, there's a lot of. Use, it's the only roadway that one can uh go north-south in this part of our city and avoid Wausatch Boulevard. So, living there myself, I can attest uh that dropping on Danish is, is a thing that I do regularly and. Many of my constituents use it. And so having the continuous sidewalk on the west side of the street. Uh, because the majority of the east side of Danish has no sidewalk. Uh, is, it's very crucial, uh, especially with our prioritization of walkability for our city. And I would highly urge that we uh get a, a little better estimate, perhaps based on. If we could see the numbers, if, if the one residential project goes ahead or. If it's just based on mostly sidewalk without major modifications to the roadway.
So I think those are all great thoughts and, and Councilmember Brill, so, so um. Sounds like to me, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, we're not quite ready to apply for tap funds here, maybe with not knowing. Is that, is there, you said there's already a building permit on that lot?
So if we were to, if we were to move forward with. Uh, trying to seek funds. We would likely omit this property. And rely on the, the development to, to construct the budget.
But we don't know when that uh.
Correct.
It was, it was approved in twenty-twenty-one and I'm not sure what their.
So one of the things that we could do with. A project we already have planned is we could end up. Reimbursing ourselves three hundred thousand on seventeen East.
Correct.
That could eventually, we could earmark if we did get it to this project.
Correct, yeah.
I guess. I mean, we're, we're gonna prioritize, my first would be the seventeenth East.
Yeah, that's right.
That steep. Slope on Creek has been an issue. Uh, for, for just as long, that would probably be my second choice. Danish third and then the.
Yeah, the heart would be lower on my scale through, at least it there on the seventeenth. The uh. The creek, I think it'd be interesting to try and get pedestrian numbers there, there. I would love to see if it's really a lot of people walking on that. Do you, do you think there are? Or you think more would, I guess. I don't know, I know.
I think that's the case, if, if you build it, they will come more than it is. Because right now, there is, there is nowhere to walk. There's a big pile of dirt in the way.
Well, they, they walk out in the street. I know, th- there's a number of them. They've been doing that for years. They've actually made that. Issue, brought it up numerous times over the years.
Yeah.
That, can't we just get this last piece done? Um, there was hope and that was really great that we got Ivory to do as much as they did, but they did, there's that last little section. So this actually, the other advantage there is it, is it would complete. An east-west. I mean, we, we've got one. We don't have that many east-west routes all the way through the city. Fort Union's one. Creek Road is almost completely one. And thus, that would match that up.
Give us some more time. I mean, we could even prioritize them seventeen Creek and then Danish.
As long as seventeenth East is first, I'm good.
Well, that's happening anyway. That's the good news. The option that we get is.
There's some butters there and if it comes in under. And you end up with three hundred, that we could move to one of the other projects. That, that, that's even better.
Yeah.
Safe passage though, from those schools, I think is really important.
There is a lot of kids from Santa Fe that go up there.
And the neighborhoods, but Santa Fe, Bowlers are two big projects that have a lot of younger kids.
Cut to a renewal, any thoughts?
And I'm, I'm with you on.
He said number one.
Uh, we've heard a number of concerns from residency in that area, and I think they wouldn't utilize it, yeah, but I believe it's a tier two for me.
That's a steep hill.
Yeah.
I've been up on a bicycle and it's.
Something else.
It's fun.
So is that good enough direction?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So, in my understanding, that Danish doesn't make the top two according to the, uh, council direction.
We put it at the re as of right now, I think. I think, I think getting better cost estimates on Danish would be, could happen in the interim, right? That some of the slope things that you're talking about, and then, you know, maybe to even try to find out when the. I would hate to do all that work and then that lot sits there unimproved for another couple of years. I mean, anyway, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure. But. Yeah, we can, what we'll do is prepare the, the applications and, and update the cost estimates in the concept one.
Perfect. So if I understand, we're submitting three, prioritize one, two, three, or submitting ones?
I, I think we submit one, submit.
Because we're, we're gonna get the one, basically, right?
Well, that's, we were supposed to, we did it after, I think we applied for this one, no? Was it twenty six?
There was one we didn't, we didn't, one year we didn't apply, we just got, anyway, we can.
I think we.
One, one. Uh, yeah, I would say, unless, plus there's like a huge difference, this would be expensive to say, well, if they won't give us that, we'll maybe get, but. You're looking like they're all about the same.
Do what your boss says. Thank you all, appreciate that.
And his boss.
Item D under staff reports is Dover Hill Park discussion. So uh, we've got our community and economic development director, Mike Johnson, here, and we'll let you start off with some of the, some more information that we have. Thank you.
That last time. It was more full last time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is just an update on the Dover Hill Park supplemental. This has been now through Planning Commission, discussion with the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee and the Architectural Review Commission. Um, so I just wanted to give the council an update, because this has all happened kind of in the last month, month and a half, and then lay out the next steps in this. So I'm gonna run through this quickly. This is probably more detail than we need to get into, but I've got a lot of information here. Answer any questions if there are any. I think the council's all familiar with the property. Just over six acres, uh, uh, right across from Ferguson Park, actually, just west of Wasset Boulevard. But accessed through the, the residential neighborhood there. So this is the, um, the subdivision proposal, the planning unit development proposal that came into city staff. After Ivory Homes had completed the previous fault studies on the property and identified a number of fault lines that run right through the middle of the site.
And are, we're between those.
Yeah, correct.
The retention basins are.
I'll know, yeah, they're, they're still kind of being finalized and designed, but there is a plan in here that. Actual retention.
They would be.
Uh, not necessarily, some, some of those are on the park, I'll show you. So, so what? Uh, in twenty twenty, I believe, there was a proposal for seventeen lots, planning unit development, a bunch of reduced setbacks throughout there. Um, the planning commission approved it, but they did not approve the setback reduction. None of that ended up mattering because of the fault studies. Um, so they kind of went back to the drawing board, working, meeting with us. Um, meeting with uh, the seller, who's the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. Um, to come up with a revised proposal here that, that they still. Um, the, the intention is still to find a, a solution here that's as mutually beneficial to all parties as possible, so. What has come forward is thirteen lot planning and development, uh, with the public park parcel in the middle. Kind of bifurcating the, the residential units on both sides. So you have three lots access on Dover Hill, one off of Summer Hill Drive. And then uh, the remaining nine would access via a new private street uh, off of that Summer Hill Drive loop there. Uh, for, i- in terms of entitlement, this is a preliminary plat and a planning unit development. That's all administrative in nature, so the planning commission is the land use authority for the actual formal subdivision uh, approval of this. So this is the long background. I won't go into, to a lot of it because we've been through it before, but the last three bullet points are new that I'd like to draw your attention to. On January fourth, this went to the planning commission and it received, for public hearing, it received unanimous approval at that meeting. So this, we go back, this subdivision, the, the actual layout of lots and the location of the lots and. Uh, you know, everything shown here was approved by the planning commission.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I thought if there were setbacks, that were not in the, up to code, that they did have to come to council, is that wrong?
So in the planning unit development, eh, that allows to, to open up, to, to pres- basically to preserve natural features or. Uh, uh, see a more creative use of land, the, an applicant is allowed to request variations and setbacks. And even building heights and lot sizes, that didn't happen here. Um, but i- in order to provide something that they normally wouldn't have to, in this case, it was to, to kind of make room for the public parks. Um, so this received, and I'll show you which lots in a minute, received those setback reductions. It's much more minimized than the, the seventeen lot proposal that we were originally. Um, later in January, just a couple of weeks ago, this went to the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. Their advisory nature, so they don't have any formal um, decision-making authority, but they did review the park design, made some recommendations. And then the very next day, it went to the Architecture Review Commission, which is a commission that has to review all planned unit developments. Uh, received approval from them, which is called Certificate of Design Compliance, with some conditions that I will um, show you here in a minute as well. And that brings us to where we are tonight. Just, just as a quick background, this was the original proposal that is not, this is off the table. This was the seventeen lot configuration. The next slide, you'll see, this is where all the fault lines were found. Uh, right through the middle of the site, you can put a park on fault lines, you cannot put habitable structures on fault lines. So this is when the, the ongoing meetings began again, because the city's original offer was for. Kind of this eastern two acre portion here, which is um.
Going only to that church, that would have been great. Then it had, they had the fire, earthquake was set. Flood.
Yeah.
Get a couple of other.
That's a.
Biblical.
Proper, isn't it?
They, they, they have it all.
Um, this layout here shows a conceptual park design. Uh, in meeting with, with Ivory Homes, the, the kind of intention of this park was expressed, that it'd be a passive park. Uh, not, not how, it's not big enough to have any programmed, you know, activity fields or sports leagues or anything like that, so. Have some parks.
Like Golden Hills or Hollow Mount.
Sure, yeah, exactly. Uh, to have a good pedestrian circulation, and one of the priorities early on from the city was to preserve the pavilion that's existing there. And that is shown down in this, this lower corner here. I'll show you in a minute too, this, this site lowers. It's, it's higher on Dover Hill Drive and it, it lowers from west to east, so this park design was done in a way to try to. Uh, accommodate the, the grade change through the site. Uh, council member Bracken, you can see here, this is not finalized, but some retention areas for uh, for water storage. Grated into some of these areas. Um, there's one over here, this one is being reworked by Ivory right now, so. Um.
So it's kind of a combination, some of it's privately owned, some of it's gonna be part of the.
Yeah, we're asking them to accommodate as much as they can on their private property before it, any overflow is, is filtered and discharged into the public park.
Park would need a lot of retention.
Right. Um, the idea with um, the, the kind of reworked uh, negotiation is. Because the city's original offer for this eastern two acres, that was relatively flat, undeveloped land already. The new park location is a, a parking lot and a church building and retaining walls, the, the site prep and grading and demolition costs are much, much higher here. Um, the idea with this is that um, Ivory would construct the park to a design that's approved by the city council. Through a development agreement, and that's where the council's role in this comes. Um, and they, the, the cost of that improvement uh, would be factored into, not the city's cost of obtaining the land. But into Ivory's cost of purchasing the land. So that is a negotiation that would happen between Ivory and, and the seller here. But the, the goal is that the city will pay the amount it's always intended to pay for this park space. And at the end of the project, uh, the, the park will be completely built out along with all the homes in the site. That is still ongoing, but that's, that's kind of just to illustrate why uh, we, we came to be. Uh, okay with this as the park location.
This concept plans will wait to the. The DRC.
Yep, the A R C.
A R C, okay.
So, so the key with that, just to reiterate, is we, we would get the park built, this design. Without having to expend additional costs to do that beyond our acquisition. Correct. Uh, and, and frankly, when, when we saw the, the conceptual cost estimate for what Ivory could build this park for. It's half or, or less than half of what the city could do the same exact park for.
Well, that's a win-win. Keeping the pavilion, those are expensive, and so, have, and are we gonna review on that? Matter animal about uh, how sturdy it is, it's not a detriment to.
No.
Right?
We haven't seen any details on it.
So I did want to clarify, in the plating process, the planning commission approves a preliminary plat, which has conceptual or, or kind of early on grading plans. And drainage plans and utility plans. The next step for Ivory Homes is to develop actual construction grade plans for. All of the different aspects of this site that will be put through the city's ordinance review, which will look at, you know, the grading and the. The, any fill or, or cuts from the site, any geotechnical or, or ground studies that have been done. Obviously, they've done fault studies, but there may be others that are applicable. So that all comes between preliminary plat and final plat. This is just an illustration, th- this was mainly to show the Architecture Commission of what the playground is on that site. Um, that's shown there, it's the little black kind of lobby thing there, but it's, it's interface and with the uh, with the pavilion there. Um, I'm gonna go now to this, just to bring the council up to speed. These are the four lots that receive some sort of. Uh, reduction or variation from the normal standards. I, I do want to note, all of these lots are, comply and are actually um. Substantially larger than the minimum size required. Eight thousand square feet is all a lot needs to be in this zone. These are all. Uh. The smallest one is uh, one eleven and it's nine thousand ninety one hundred square feet. So they're all uh, well above the minimum size. Uh, there's no, been no exceptions or variations on building heights or, or any other standards. Except, you can see here the side yards, the, the minimum side yard setbacks between. These homes here, and then from lot one oh nine to Wasset Boulevard, uh, a, a reduction was approved there. Not saying they have to go down to this five foot setback that was approved, but they can.
Five feet on each side.
Five feet on each side, so ten feet total.
That's close.
Sure.
See, reach out and shake your hands.
The, the goal there was so that the impact of the setback reduction didn't affect any uh, adjacent existing residential. You recall before, with the seventeen lot configuration, there were homes all against this back, this northern side, and they all have setback reduction. Lots one oh five, six, seven, and eight do not have any, any special exceptions or variation.
So I know, I know one of the concerns was one oh five, one oh six, one oh seven, one oh eight was um. The height, which would be fine at the current grade, but if there's any fill that then, so did we ever get. Ivory to commit to not doing any fill, or where are we on that?
Yeah, so the Architecture Commission uh, weighed in on that, and I'll, I'll get to that here.
We would like.
So I'll get to that in just a second and explain that a little bit, so you're aware.
This is.
This, this is the grading profile of the site, so you can see, um, I'll start with maybe section. The, the AA line, the, what this means is we're looking basically west to east across the, the back of the site. So you can see, on the left here would be the existing homes on Brighton Point Drive. On the right would be lots one oh five, six, seven, eight, and nine, as you see them looking west to east. So, so what Ivory's plan is, and again, we, we do need a final grading plan, we need to review the actual grading details through the city's ordinance. But their plan there is, they've got that bleacher structure and some hillside, would be to retain that hillside with a, a two-tiered retaining wall. That would need to be properly engineered, and then um, uh, place the homes below that. Now, whether fill is needed or not to, to meet basic drainage and erosion requirements. The Ivory still has to demonstrate that, but there is an Architecture Review Commission requirement that the, the minimum fill necessary. To achieve minimum code compliance i- is all that can be filled there. If they fill beyond that, that counts against building.
Okay, okay. Well, it's, I'm, I'm, do we know, not to create any problem, but. Are, you've got a twenty-six foot hike roof there, I guess it's pitched, so that's where you're.
That's not, that's a, that's a horizontal.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah, all right. So that's a typical two-story-ish house. Usually, that thirty feet?
Thirty-five feet is what any home in the city is allowed.
I was concerned about the twenty-six, thanks for correcting me.
Yeah.
Two stories usually stays within thirty-five, or can you push that to two and a half to get up to thirty-five?
Thirty-five is usually two stories with a moderately pitched roof.
Okay. Do you know the maximum that you were talking about, that the DRC could require for fill?
Um, well, no, it's not, so, so they talked, they threw out the, the, and I will go back because we did get an email about this. I'll go back and listen to the minutes of the ARC meeting. It was thrown out that, you know, maybe five feet is all that's allowed. But, but where I believe it landed, and again, I'll double check, is the minimum amount needed to get drainage to go where it needs to go. Which is basically north to south. It doesn't have to be a lot, um, but it has to be graded a little bit to, to, for water to run off where it needs to.
Okay.
Uh, and then again, any fill.
The total building height from existing grade?
So if it's a, if it's a city requirement.
Okay.
That establishes a new existing grade.
Okay.
Anything beyond that.
It's the drainage, then they, they may get a couple of extra feet there depending on, okay.
But the direction was clear from the ARC that in a minimum amount necessary, keep it to a minimum, Ivory uh, acknowledged that and was aware of that. We, we need to wait to see what comes in. Yeah. Um, section AA or uh, BB is at the bottom here. This is looking south to north across the park. And again, this shows Dover Hill Drive is on the left, and then Wasset Boulevard would be, I mean, it's up a little bit, but over on the right. So um, actually, I think this home here is probably one, one thirteen or one twelve. So you can see here, Dover Hill Drive is, is quite a bit higher than the rest of the park. So the, the actual trail portion of the park would be graded down uh, from, from west to east. The playground and pavilion sit lower uh, than the, you know, the entry to the park off of Dover Hill Drive. There may be a, a, a depression there for the retention area, and then the homes would be down below. So you can see, they're not planning to raise the entire retention area up, that ball field now. They're gonna try to use the grade as much as possible that exists today.
You know, my understanding of uh, some of my constituents' concerns i- is the northern. Uh, so the units one oh five through one oh nine, and the fill in that area. You know, being allowed uh, to, you know, raise, raise the ultimate height of the roof. And disrupt their views out to the mountains, so uh, you know, across the park. So my, now hearing you tonight, I understand that from north to south, you want drainage, so it's sounding to me. That Ivory will be authorized to add significant fill on the northern edge of this parcel. Uh, for this drainage. I mean, you've demonstrated more this B, you know, the B line. But I'm talking the A line, I think, is what seems to, at least they, what I've heard from constituents is a. Is a real concern.
So like I said, the, the ARC's direction is the grading bill has to be to an absolute minimum. Bare minimum needed to, to make drainage requirements happen. You can see here, it's hard to zoom in, you can kind of see. This is the existing grade here. Oh, and you can see the dark line, you know, this is not an engineering grade drawing. But you can see they're within a, a couple feet of what that original hillside is. They're gonna catch a lot of the great difference through retaining walls. So I.
But i- is that, is that going from north to south?
North is on the left and south is on the right.
Okay.
This would be the homes on Brighton Point Drive. Which are right now.
So most of the homes are in a hole, basically, right?
I mean. Yeah, yeah, they're gonna utilize the gray change, and they are not raising everything to be.
It's a good case scenario.
Across the street from you.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, not just, just not as much.
Yeah.
And this is showing, you know, the, the sketch here is showing a one-story house to the, to the north. Obviously, anyhow, I don't know what all the homes are over there, they can be two stories as well. So, you know, in terms of your view protection, I don't know the exact impact, but they're, they are proposing to take advantage of the gray difference. So this home will sit down below what's to the north. Again, we will ensure it's kept to the, the absolute minimum. Anything beyond the very minimum needed uh, is, counts against their height. Um, okay, so these are the, the Architecture Review Commission conditions. A lot of these are specific to the park itself. And, and this is. And and this is where the the council will kind of come in, uh the the council's role will will kind of play into this, but. Uh I'll go through these quickly. A lot of these are are fairly minor design things um. The first condition there is is minimizing the amount of fill needed. When they are grading and adding fill, they want to do geotechnical just earth earthwork studies to make sure the fill is properly engineered and compacted. To make sure it's it's safe that way, because I know there have been concerns there as well. Um access, let's see, retaining walls here should be designed with planting beds between the levels. Access along Street B should be extended to approve improved pedestrian connectivity of the park. I'll show this. Um, I'll just use this one. Basically, what that's saying is a pedestrian easement is going to be included on this lot. To allow access into the park from these new homes. And then there was another one that an easement will be placed here in the case that there's ever a sidewalk or or pedestrian. Uh amenity on the west side of Wausatch Boulevard, there will be an easement here to make that connection to Wausatch as well.
When when will that appear in a?
That will be on the final plat.
In the final plat?
Yeah. Um. The the ARC, even though the the setback reduction was approved, they did recommend that uh the crowding between homes on that east side is minimized as much as possible. So they can go down to five feet, but you know, the the recommendation was try not to if you don't have to, you know, the way you articulate your home.
They wanna sell these homes too, and they're nicer to make it.
Of course.
Mike, I have a question. Is the view shed protected or not?
The. It's all based on what the ordinance allows in terms of building height. It's thirty five feet. There was no, there was no additional height granted. There's a provision where if a slope on on a lot is a certain amount, then the that height maximum may be reduced to thirty feet. That will all be analyzed as part of the the final grading plan.
But I guess my question is, if there was a problem with the people to the north. If that home was taller, do they have any say in that? They don't, do they?
No, not in so much that the home built complies fully with.
Right, that's right.
Can you, can you bring that up just one more time quickly? Because I'm looking at uh this diagram printed draw that easement.
Oh.
So the, oh yeah, that.
This?
Yeah, so so you're you're saying that the pedestrian easement, there'll be one here.
Now, there's Street B up here where the the hand is.
Oh, thank you. Okay, it's here.
All the way there and.
That that one's a great for all of these people. That's that becomes an amenity that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, I'll try to get through these quickly. Animate the park by closing the walking loop internally within the park. Um. Uh they did request that they look into something like a a small swing set uh within the park. And they're are, you know, keep working with the chair of the Architecture Commission, who actually happens to live uh very near this site. And he's here. Scott Peters is our.
Mike is gonna mention, and you may bring it up, that with the P T O S, which is park trails and open space, they. They mentioned about some parking down by the pavilion.
Yes.
And so, or you're gonna.
So so this is something the council is gonna have to weigh in on. The Architecture Commission suggested um actually eliminating any parking stalls from the park. Um, the the rationale for that is. There was a a lot of importance placed on the the view and the openness of the park from Dover Hill Drive. They felt that placing parking there. Visually separated the the park. It kind of sealed off the neighborhood with if cars were gonna be parked there, the openness kind of disappears.
And I can, I just wanted to say I concur with the planning commission.
The issue would be if people are gonna drive to it, they're gonna park horizontally on the street to get through it and block it in.
So so additionally, that that could happen. Additionally, the the P T O S and and ARC actually said if if. Parking is is desired here or or a requirement by the city council. It should be down by the pavilion and playground uh if at all. With that, they recommend that it's not there, you know, they they said, you know, Dover Hill Drive is pretty wide right here, so there is room along the street to park. Then the sidewalk access into the park would be open. Um if parking is desired, try to locate it down by the pavilion. Because that's where, if you've got, you know, equipment or or you're hosting a barbecue or something, you probably don't wanna be by that pavilion anyways. So something to consider in the development.
Also, no, no homes free. Go drive against the person.
Uh and again, this is ties into it, improving pedestrian access from Dover Hill Drive. So the walking path is kind of the main access feature rather than parking stalls. Uh minimize the slope of that southeastern retention basin to keep it as shallow as possible. This was to create um. More of a. Sorry, an activity area that tied sort of, you know, the pavilion isn't there and it drops off down into a hole. So that this is all kind of unified as one kind of. Use area.
Scott's office.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Um, another suggestion was to, instead of this trail cutting across the middle of the park. Uh rerouting it around kind of the outside of the park, that opens up that central area. I'll just go through the other ones here quickly. This will also come back to the council, so we don't. If there are questions, we're happy to uh keep getting into them with you. Um landscape the pond in inside to encourage use just as an activity area. Um I do want to state the the around the outside of the park, that was all proposed to be low water usage plants and landscaping. It's not. The the only sod and grass is in that main central loop area where where you'd want that in a park. Around the outside would be low water usage plant material with uh one of the recommendations that came from actually the P T O S committee and the ARC was. That they be um pollinator friendly species. Maintain maintain lighting to the pavilion if feasible. Um. And then locate required street lighting to benefit the park. So any subdivision is gonna require streetlights. The recommendation is put them as close to that park entrance as possible. To just for safety and and that kind of thing. Uh add seating and shade trees around the playground, just to provide more comfort for uh, you know, parents and and users of the park. So this has now been through um Architecture Review, all the the administrative regulatory stuff. So if this was a full private development, this would just proceed. The final plat and construction. It's not because the city uh is involved here with uh the the two acres that's being offered. So. The next steps, uh negotiations between the buyers and the seller uh have to continue primarily between Ivory and the seller. Um to ensure that price reduction for the park uh is realized. This has now been vetted in public meetings, so we we, you know, we're optimistic about that. Uh and then submittal of full construction plans by Ivory Homes, that'd be that final plat process that's administrative. And then a development agreement approval by the city council, and this would establish the location of the park and the the parcel that the city is purchasing. Uh this could establish the final park design, um uh park construction timelines. Uh other things like that, we we would recommend. It's it's mostly related to the public element of this, to that public park. I do also want to mention, I forgot one condition. They uh they requested. A lot of people use that for a sledding hill right now, so they requested looking at the grading from west to east in a way that may. Provide an opportunity for a a small sledding hill amenity to be incorporated into the great change of the park. So that's part of that as well.
That'll never be officially sanctioned.
No, because of insurance. Not at all, not at all. I uh just to look at the grading.
Kind of like Mountain View, you know, Mountain View. Allegedly, we don't know about, allegedly.
Anyways, the development agreement will need to come to the city council. We are waiting on that because we we want to hear back from the seller on the price reduction that would be needed to make this all. Bring back that full update. So then it would just be development agreement and final approval of the real estate transaction and then it all moves forward. That's that's where it is.
Thanks, Mike. You put a lot of work and effort into that. Thank you.
Amazing. This has come through to this.
Yeah, it is. Hey, item E P uh uh P D D two text amendment. And this is in reference to the northern gravel pit, the the development by Rockworth. So Mike, why don't you give us some background on this as well?
Thank you. This is, uh this takes a little bit of explanation because it's a, it's an amendment of an ordinance, but it's an ordinance that was a site specific. Plan approvals for the northern gravel pit. So this is that the northern twenty acres of the gravel pit site, uh the Rockworth Development Site that was approved. By the Planning Commission and City Council back in twenty twenty twenty, twenty one. Sometime in there. Um, this is known as the P D D two ordinance. So the way the city's planned development district works is we have a. We have a chapter of our zoning code that's called Plan Development District, and that enables the creation of site specific ordinances. One was applied to the Walsh property a handful of years ago. So that that approved a development plus an ordinance that's actually a a a. Its own city zone and it's got its own city regulations. That's only applicable to that site. That was P D D one. This is P D D two. So this is not the city's general planned development district ordinance. This is only the ordinance as it applies to the northern twenty acres of the gravel pit. That was again, fully reviewed and and approved by the council uh a couple of years ago. Um so this is the refresher there. You can, it's a mixed use um project. It's got an apartment, a a future condo, which we'll need to come back through that full process because the. Um, the use was entitled, but the size and unit count was not. Got some retail buildings, a hotel and some other uses there, but uh this is all approved already. As part of that, um there was some initial site scoping that identified numerous hazards on the site, fault line, slope stability, liquefaction. Uh hillside remediation, et cetera. Lots of of different sensitive elements that needed to be studied there. A lot of that was done and in those initial studies, it said, hey. As development goes forward, you're gonna have to do these extra things as you uh as your plans are refined, your engineering becomes clear. So the, like I said, the initial approval included requirements that each phase go through additional scoping as part of final plan preparation. Uh and then uh more recently, additional geologic geologic hazard studies have been completed near each building footprint. That's basically saying, hey, they trenched for earthquake faults early on. As you come in with each building trench where the exact location of each building will be to make sure. There are no fault lines or fault setback zones where you're proposing to place it.
If they discover one that it's anticipated that they'd be coming for this type text amendment.
Well, if they discover one and it results in a substantial change, then it has to go back through the full P D D process. This is kind of where we're getting to. So they did trench the site. Um, this is the apartment building that's on the the east side. This is kind of their phase one. And you can see this on the left is the original site plan. They anticipated a kind of a diagonally sloped um fault line there. They found it. It was just at a different angle than they originally anticipated, so it does cut across the corner. The the northeast corner of that apartment building. So the impact of this is they proposed a building reduction to avoid that fault setback. This is actually made the building smaller. Uh it it's reduced um the number of units from three hundred twenty five to three hundred. And it resulted in a a relocation of the pool amenity.
That would also, this was also the subject, there was a. Twenty, what was there, affordable housing?
Yeah, fifteen percent, fifteen percent.
Still reduce that accordingly.
By a couple of units, correct. Um the the condominium use, the the numbers there haven't been approved yet, but that will also factor into the affordable housing. So however many there are there, there has to be that percentage of of affordability in this. This is just massing to see how that fault line adjustment impacts uh the various corners of the site. You can see. That these are not final architectural, this is just massing diagrams. You can see from the southwest corner, looking kind of up. Into the the building, you you don't see much change at all between uh what it was before and what it is now. There's an opening, it's hard to see. There's an opening in in the building here to break up the massing. So.
Does it say on the side? Is that the design? What does that say on that vertically on the before picture?
Oh, I I don't know.
Doug.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Is that what it said? The southeast corner, this is kind of behind the building, so uh again, no impact there. Where you see the changes are on the north side. So the northwest corner before, you could see the units wrapped around all the way to the the back of the site. The fault line is, I'm trying to move my cursor, generally where that fault setback zone was found is about right here. So if I take that down below, it kind of cut off that little corner of the building. This will need to be articulated in design, but you can see it affects the massing on. Most noticeably on that northwest corner. And then on the northeast corner from the back, you see again, originally the units curled around all the way to the back of the property. That doesn't happen anymore because that fault line runs kind of through there.
Well, I I think I have to go on record as saying with the with the seven point eight Richter scale earthquake. That we are reading about in the news that has happened in Turkey and in Syria, Syrians as well to the. Tune of sadly thousands of deaths. I. Know that, you know. We could have in this area a an earthquake of uh geologist say six point seven to seven point seven. Magnitude earthquake and uh. I feel very uncomfortable with it. My density, I know it's a, it's already been approved by a previous city council, but. Uh, I, even with these setbacks uh and with this engineering in the United States versus in Turkey and and Syria. You know, there's usually an aft quake that happens twelve hours it up later. There's. There's other factors that come into play, what what it does to roadways when there's major earthquakes. Um, I think this kind of high density of projects uh in a sensitive lands area were riddled with. Earthquake with the Wausatch fault lines uh. It's not something that I approve of. I just have to go on record to say that.
So thank you. So so the process, so we have a public hearing.
That's that's kind of background. I need to, I need to explain what the actual text amendment is, but it it's important in understanding, this is what they found, and this is why they've come forward with this request. There's a line in the ordinance, in the P D D two ordinance, that says material changes to the ordinance or the development plan arising from a submittal. The discovery of of unanticipated um geotechnical, geologic or other site hazards, or for any other reasons, shall re- require an amendment to this ordinance following. Basically, the full P D D process, neighborhood meetings, D R C, planning commission, city council, it's gotta go through the whole. Uh process for approval if there's a material change based on the discovery of those hazards.
You're defining material change.
What they are proposing is to clarify, uh this is, this is the request in red. These, this one sentence is what their application was for. For purposes of this section, a change resulting in a decrease of less than ten percent of the unit count density. Building height, building massing or building footprint is not considered a material change. So in other words, if there was a fault line that required them to completely relocate their building or change it drastically or make it taller or bigger or whatever else. This doesn't apply. They have to go through the full P D D process. If if a hazard was discovered that eliminates a building, they they just can't build it. It also has to go back through the process, but if it's a minor adjustment. A minor reduction of less than ten percent, then it it does not have to go through the process. It can just be reviewed and and found to be. Still in compliance with the original approval.
And they're not asking for, that doesn't apply to any increases, simply.
Correct. And it it does not apply. Let me go to findings here. Uh the material change is not defined in the P D D two ordinance, not defined in the zoning ordinance. Or the planner's dictionary, and that's of note because our code says if there's not a definition in here, consult the planner's dictionary. Uh limiting material change. Limiting material change to maximum reduction of ten percent limits the scope and impact of the lap changes that can be made without that full process. An increase still requires the full amendment. It only applies to those limited things, their unit count density, building height and footprint. Courtyards, public trails, the public amenities cannot be reduced under this provision. So any change to those would have to go back through the full process. We don't want this to impact those. So it allows minor and reasonable flexibility that arises from building design and engineering. The commission unanimously recommended approval of this. We did not receive any public comments on this. With the following four recommendations that are really kind of minor in nature, just clarifying. You can't make one ten percent reduction and then apply for another one and another one and make, basically make your building go away over time. You you know, just closing a a potential loophole um. Some grammatical clarification and then eliminating building massing from the reduction because measuring massing is kind of a vague term. It's hard to measure massing and quantify that. So this red sentence is the request in front of you. This is what you uh will be taking public comments on tonight and then voting on it in an upcoming meeting.
So then that's what I was gonna clarify. So there we will be having a public hearing for this in our uh business meeting. I will listen to see if there are any comments and then we we can vote to approve it in a following meeting. So we're not gonna vote.
We may want to consider if it makes sense to. Put those definitions or those type of a qualification into the general P D D process.
Yeah.
But overall, it's going to be a lower density.
Yeah, and this one, this, yeah, it makes, yeah, makes a lot of sense. Okay, awesome. Thank you, Mike. Uh don't go anywhere again. So we have uh. Well, I'd like to do this in twenty five minutes if possible, but anyway, we've got a s- a sleds. Instead of lands, evaluation, development. instead of lands, evaluation, development standards, ordinance update uh where we're going to talk about something. So I'll let Mike uh lead kind of lead this discussion.
Yeah, thanks. This can be as long or short as you want, and and we counsel can take as much time to work through this. This again is it's up to you when to bring this back. So um what we focus on tonight in the sleds ordinance is the riparian section um. There's been a lot of interest in this um back at the planning commission level and and now um at at the city council level, we we've heard consistent feedback from the community on this. So uh we feel it's it's good to talk through any concerns and and make sure it's right. Just some quick background as refresher. I'm not going to spend too much time on this. The riparian protection standards are already included as a listed hazard in the sleds ordinance, but the chapter that's supposed to contain the standards doesn't exist. So as part of the council's, the previous council's direction to update the sleds ordinance back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, you know, as staff, we saw, okay, riparian standards are listed in here as a hazard. Let's try to draft some standards that we think could reasonably apply. So that's where they come from. The approach that was taken um was was kind of multi-pronged here. We looked at standard practices for riparian management from other western ordinances. This includes local ordinances and more regional ordinances. And we looked at Salt Lake City and Lehigh and I believe South Jordan that that have these. We looked outside of Utah. We then looked at best management practices from regulatory agencies like Salt Lake County Flood Control, the Division of Water Quality at the state, FEMA, the Army Corps of Engineers, those those people that work with kind of floodway um standards. And then we tried to fit all of that into the city's existing approach to other sensitive lands hazards, which is the sleds ordinance. But that's where the draft protection area uh ordinance came from. The main concept is this, and you'll find this fairly commonly throughout riparian ordinances that exist is uh development and and activity is regulated more strictly closer to the top of the bank and less strictly as you move away. And then I'm going to jump.
And and just emphasize, we're not the only community and even in this valley that has riparian ordinances. So this isn't something new for Cotton Heights. There's a number of other communities that have these in place.
Now, the creek goes to the west, but then it curves a little bit to the north. Murray does not have the riparian. And so do you know that you you were there in Murray? Why do they not have the riparian?
I I don't know.
Maybe the same reason as we have not had something that was defined.
Right. I'm just trying to decide if there's anything that's come up that has been a problem because we haven't had it because we've got a lot of other uh stopgaps, you know, as you build and different things like that. And so I just wanted to bring that.
One of the things to think about is Mike keeps going through this. Well, why don't you do it? Why?
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm just going to touch on a few things. Overall intent, um, the I I did send out some common questions we had heard. It's part of the council packet. That's posted online as well. Being part of the sleds ordinance, it's a, it it's geared around development activity and regulating development. So the standards are such that the 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 most restrictive requirements that are drafted here apply mainly to brand new development or or substantial redevelopment or grading activity. There there are exceptions to that. I'm not trying to group everything into a basket here. But but that is really the intention here is this is a a an ordinance focused on uh ensuring new development is done safely and and trying to find the right balance of allowing existing uses and homes and and properties to to maintain, you know, what they have. So I'm going to just jump to the table of uses and then I'm going to turn it over to the council. But basically what was established is depending on which uh which zone a property is in, there are different setbacks from uh from the the top of bank that are are built in here. If you're in a larger lot zone or a rural zone or a, you know, a commercial zone or something like that, that zone A, which is going to have your most strict uh development requirements is fifty feet in diameter, and then everything else goes from there. In your typical single family zones, zone A is only thirty-five feet. When this originally started, staff was only proposing a twenty-five foot area A zone citywide. Planning commission and the public comment we heard at the time is that there was a desire to make the standards more strict. Um, so it was planning commission direction at the time to for larger properties to establish a larger area A. And there you can see the other one twenty-five feet. So I want to go quickly to the table of uses. The table of uses includes twenty different land use types. And then you can see whether it's allowed, allowed with with regulation, allowed with some notes or not allowed in each of those zones away from the the top of the bank. And there are again twenty uses that are detailed here. Anything outside of that is not regulated by this ordinance. Uh, but I just want to touch on you know, new primary structure, new accessory buildings. Those are regulated. So if you're building a brand new home or a brand new commercial business or something like that, you subdivision, these regulations are going to be fairly strict if you're trying to build close to the top of the bank.
So new um, so does that go substantial redevelopment? Is is that where you draw that line for whether it's a new structure or not?
No, so a new structure is just a new structure. Um, there there's um, there's a line in here for if you're trying to add on to your home or expand it or or, you know, do something like a voluntarily demolish it and rebuild it. Um, there there's a process there. And I'll get to that in just a second. You can see here AR means allowed with with requirements. Um, there's a process detailed in the ordinance that you submit plans to the DRC and the DRC reviews this. This is exactly like what happens i- with uh steep slopes and fault lines and uh floodplain, other other hazards in the city. Um, new livestock habitats, pens or other enclosures are not allowed close to the top of the bank. If one exists today, that is allowed to continue per maintenance of any use or structure lawfully established prior to the ordinance.
How many feet? What's the restriction on the number of feet?
Depends on where you are with twenty-five to fifty. So new livestock.
Anything that first called that twenty-five or fifty.
Per this draft, a new livestock habitat would not be allowed in that immediate zone adjacent to the creek.
And livestock doesn't count chickens. Those are handled elsewhere.
That's different. Livestock is, yeah. Owls, goats and horses and cows and yeah.
There's other things smaller than horses, but.
Yeah. So you can see I, the point I want to make here, and I I really strongly encourage each council member to read through this in detail. I I'm not going to read through it word by word with you all tonight, but but it is is good. We we want to make sure that you know, I'm not trying to convey information incorrectly. I I really strongly encourage you to be to read through this, but the point I want to make here is the the things that are not allowed are are fairly there there's not a lot of things that are fully prohibited. There are a lot of A's, which just means, hey, you're allowed to do it. You don't even need to come talk to the city. There's some notes here that say if you do it, you should do it in in certain way. And so there's some lists there. Ground disturbing activity, this would be substantial grading. If you're changing the the elevation of your property or grading in, you know, your your backyard, you can do it. We just want to see the grading plan before you do. Uh, same thing. If you go dig a a trench or you you want to explore your property today where there's a fault or or something else, you have to come in and get that approved first. Um, this this one's been a a sticking point and and this is the a council call, but it is uh best practice not to allow fertilizer, herbicides, pesticides, et cetera.
That one comes across as more maintenance as opposed to.
That one is.
Construction.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, there are exceptions in there for uh applying fertilizer to trees done by a professional, but that that has been a sticking point, and that's something.
So so just clarify, some of these homes of parallel, the river fifty feet is most of their lot, even if it's an acre, it parallels the river. So uh even on the other side of their house, would that be considered? You can't fertilize your lawn?
I- if it's in zone A, yes.
That's a problem.
Well, most homes are going to be the twenty-five foot, not the fifty.
Now, some suggestions here is the council could consider, you know, rather than fertilizer, you you can make this a suggestion. Hey, you shouldn't fertilize next to the water. You could.
Yeah, this this one, this one strikes a little different because it is maintenance type things as opposed to the new construction. So I think we may need to.
You could carve it out and say, hey, within five feet, don't fertilize. You you could just, you know, you you can go wherever you want with this. This is just best practice. Um, and and we did ask, because you brought this up, council member Bracken, if there are types of fertilizers or or chemicals that are more appropriate around water, and we asked County Flood Control and and the State Division of Water Quality, and they said, no, there's there's not a list.
They just don't like them.
They just recommend avoiding it.
In the streams, which.
Um, the the other thing, uh composting areas are also, new composting areas are proposed as being prohibited uh in actually the first two zones away from from waterways and then parking lots. Um, what I want to note, there's been some conversation around this, this first, this three A. If you have a structure today, let's say you have a structure that's fifteen feet away from the top of the bank, that under this ordinance would be considered a legal but non-conforming structure. If you then want to add on to that, um, the language here is written such that there's this process that exists, and we've used this in many cases citywide. If if your structure is legal, non-conforming, you want to add on to it, you make a request to the city's hearing officer um and 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 submit an application and go through that, and they can grant that request. Where we see this a lot is a lot of our old neighborhoods don't have complying setbacks at all with today's ordinances. So when they want to expand, they go through this process. Um, there are, so that's already established. There are three additional regulations proposed in adding on. One is that uh no portion of the new structure footprint should get closer to the bank. So that's saying if it's already too close by ordinance, if you expand, you should expand away from the bank instead of closer. Doesn't mean your whole house has to be moved, but if you want to add on, just don't get closer. There were two other recommendations. I'm going to say right now we're proposing to strike these two. But one was that the new structure doesn't require further armoring of the stream bank and and two that the existing structure doesn't have a history of flooding. Those two were were recommended by Salt Lake County Flood Control, which is why they're in here. We're proposing now and 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 will in a new draft to remove those. There's also.
I mean, honestly, they seem to make sense. If you're doing something that's going to make the bank weaker, that should probably, but.
We, so any any development would go through Salt Lake County Flood Control anyways.
Well, okay. And again, that's different if it's development or something existing.
That's my question. If it's already covered, why we.
Yeah.
Covered it again.
I mean, we can, we can refer back just to that ordinance that already exists, and that's fine. That's essentially what this is doing, but I think it is reasonable to say, hey, if you're already closer to the top of the bank, then then maybe would be recommended to just expand away from it.
You know, I I need to, I need to um share that one of my constituents said that, you know, one of the problems that he has living along Little Cotton Creek is that he counted uh, you know, seven storm drains that uh during uh rains and that flood flow right directly untreated into Little Cotton Creek. And uh so he was struggling with the importance of you know, him not being able to use fertilizers and this and that, while we know that these what not the two wrongs make a right, but I just want to go on record that that's been one of the verbalized.
I will say, as new development happens over time, you know, you correct those things. Um, a lot of stuff, there's houses right on top of fault lines that we would probably not recommend approving today, but.
I live in one of them.
Yes, yes. And you correct those things over time with the development.
Ellen, you have a a waterway a little bit going behind your home, you mentioned, and would that affect Ellen, your backyard? Because it's.
It flows. I'm not abutting it. It flows through my property uh the entire creek, but you know.
The the only other one, and I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, is with this this replacement of trees. Uh, it says you can remove hazardous trees, but they should be, they shall be replaced. Um, and it says, hey, if if you're removing a big tree, you should replace it with multiple smaller trees. Uh, we are proposing to to uh modify this from a must to a a should or a strong requirement.
Who would monitor this? Who would? Would code enforcement go over there?
Well, with with any.
We don't want any part of it.
Any ordinance violation, if if the city notices something it can enforce, if it's called in and there's a code that regulates it, then enforcement.
So you'd be on good terms with your neighbor?
That this is like building a shed or building.
Oh, I know, but I was joking about because sometimes when people were using water, they would get a phone call from somebody and say, he's watering his lawn.
So so the direction staff, the direction staff would would really appreciate from the council is, do you want us to keep tweaking this and making little adjustments to make what's here more palatable, or do you want us to take this in a different direction? Because we we keep making adjustments and and we feel it's it's a fairly reasonable ordinance.
If something's not covered, if it's not covered, why do we, you know, need redundancies?
If if you want to not regulate riparian hazards, you can do that, but that is essentially saying you don't find those a sensitive.
No, I don't think that's not, that's not saying.
So let's let's go in this direction. So so Mike, so Mike basically said, um, Bertoff, I want to commend you. I know you've done a ton of work.
Yeah.
On on this and uh this is the job. Everybody that I've talked to and I've talked to of our residents about this. I mentioned, you know, the intentions are really, really good. We we want to protect a stream. I mean, who doesn't want to protect a stream? But he- here's what I want the council to consider as we discuss this for the next seven, eight, nine minutes. Think about, we're all property, private property rights. We all own property, right? In in our, in our city. So what you have to do in 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 the minds of some of our residents is think about now, as a city, we're coming and telling them the rights that you had on your piece of land are going to change, and we're going to take some away. And 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 no matter our good intentions for what the the reason for this, the fact that it wasn't put in place before homes were built i- is 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 a big issue, but now we have to look at it, and I want you guys to think about the residents that we're affecting. We're telling them what they can do on their land. That's what this ordinance would do. Whether, you know, we can, wh- whether we minimize it or keep it how it is, we are now in effect telling them you don't have the same rights that you had before we pass it. So that that's one reason I am really um understand why our residents are so passionate about uh about this ordinance.
I I I certainly understand that. That that does come up. At the same time, the the argument is very valid that anytime we make an ordinance or we change a zone, we're 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 doing the same thing. Um, uh, we can get a little more trouble with zoning uh if there actually becomes a taking. Um, uh, I guess you'd have to, but there there are a lot of ordinances that we passed in the city. It's like, oh, that wasn't covered. We need to fix it, or this wasn't covered. Um, I think we're really close on this. Now, are you, I assume you're planning on coming next Wednesday for.
Yes.
So hey, let me, let me, let me kind of. So let me finish my thought and then we'll go around. So uh, okay, with that in mind, okay, um, I want you to consider a couple of things. Uh, and Mike mentioned a couple of them. He mentioned some of the things that we could look at changing. Um, and 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 you mentioned them, and perhaps we can summarize them after this in in an email, some of the things that you talked about specifically that we could take completely out, or we can minimize, you know, the fertilizer, those type of things. Um, a couple of things that have swayed me on this ordinance a little bit. You know, the the homeowner owns owns the property to the middle of the creek. That's that's where their property line is. Uh, the creek, you know, water is always going into the ground, so you have to be concerned about that everywhere, not just, but uh the water flows from the creek to the George River to the Utah Lake. Nope. This is not going into our drinking water. So so that's, that to me plays a little bit into um how 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 we would, how we would want to look at this. So anyway, now I'll shut up. I think Councilmember Bracken gave us some great thoughts. Let me, I I'm really interested to hear from Councilmember Newell and Peterson and Burrell.
I'll start off.
Okay.
Um, I I, there's a lot of work that's gone into this, and I'm really comfortable with a lot of the grandfathering clauses flow to that language. Um, I too have a concern about uh property rights. Um, it's, it's, it's a tough thing to try to decipher what rights to take away, what rights to deny, or or what rights to allow. And I think that that's part is going to take us a little more vetting to get through, but I I like the fact that um we've really looked at some of these concerns and taken an opportunity to eliminate some of the things that we think may not that may impact our our residents in a very negative way. Now, new construction every day outside, I think that's pretty easy. Um, it's the current residents I think we have to be most concerned with right now. Um, but I'm really comfortable with the direction we're going in, and I think there needs to be um some continued vetting to make sure that we're not in pre- embedding upon those property rights to a point to where we're really going to start to get a lot of pushback.
And that's where maybe like maintenance as opposed to new construction can be a big change.
Yeah, just that language might be, make all the difference.
Thank you, Councilor. I appreciate that. Councilmember Peterson.
I think uh probably because of the proximity of where I live, I'm not on the creek, but I've been down there about thirty-five years now and we've, over the years, when we've had floods, we've seen the work that individuals, individual homeowners have. We've, over the years, when we've had floods, we've seen the work that individuals, individual homeowners have done to help with the gambian baskets. With sandbags, you know, and all that. And I think they've been very good stewards of it. That's not to say that somebody couldn't be a bad actor and come in and do something. I know when new homes have been built, there's been very close scrutiny on what they've done when they have built a home. Where they're at in proximity to the riverbank, what they've done, the type of uh. Uh, sure, sure up the bank a certain way and different things like that. This stream, the creek is ever-moving. My one neighbor across the creek, when he loses property, it goes to his next-door neighbor. Cuz it just washes into there. So there's, there's a lot of dynamics, but. Where I live, there was some springs and they piped them. Guess where they went? Those went right into the creek. That's where they're piped. So if I fertilize my lawn. It's gonna eventually, some of that is gonna go into the creek. And I know that Utah Lake, they brought water because of a water use issue. They brought it down by the uh. Union Park and it just bows that whole creek up. So that is just in our city before it goes farther down into, until it hits the Jordan River and then goes into the Great Salt Lake. But the the residents are very fearful that they're gonna lose a lot of their rights because it goes from. You need an arborist if you're gonna cut down a tree. You need to be there and you need to replace.
Say that anymore.
Oh, you took it out?
Yeah.
That's an all. That goes for maintenance issue as opposed to.
Right, but there there's a lot, you know, when you go to the worst place, when you have an ordinance put on, your your mind goes to the very worst case scenario.
Which is fine.
And 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 some of the homes, though, when they parallel the river, these fifty feet. It takes up their, almost their whole property because of the way they parallel the river. So there's just a lot of issues that we need, and a lot of this will be brought out on on Wednesday the fifteenth, so.
Yeah, and I was gonna mention that. Councilmember Burrell.
Yes, well, um, you know, I uh, of course, don't want to not impose things that are too onerous on property owners. However. You know, in our modern times and our our many uh, efforts to um, protect our natural resources. Uh, in the air, way of air, water and land. Um, we do have to. Use our our best scrutiny. Uh, our staff has very thoroughly researched this. Um, I'm seeing uh, staff continue to modify and try to come to compromises that will. Uh, you know, afford protection of our riparian areas, our waterways. You know, even though the water may flow to the Great Salt Lake, you know, there's still uh, concerns. There's brine shrimp that live there. I'm teasing, but. Um. So, so anyways, I I I think that we're doing our best to to hear the concerns and. I really appreciate staff, you know, continuing to modify in ways that hopefully are are meeting the needs of our uh, constituents. And so uh, I'll be real interested to hear what public comments after they've been able to review these. Um, and I wanna, I wanna, well, the changes that have been made in the language, just as, it's hard for us to keep up with it when. Councilman Peterson mentioned, you know, just a moment ago when you had to correct. So we're, we're all trying to keep up with this ourselves. Um, but I wanna make sure that this uh, gets into the hands of the public uh, so that they can really review the modifications and be clear when they. Come to give their public comment if there's still things that really disturb them. And uh, and we'll, like I said, have another chance to deliberate uh, again. But again, I I think we're on a good track.
Councilmember Rockin, you want?
I just, I I just, I know it'll be a a a detailed meeting. Uh, next week, but I'm looking forward to it. I'll I'll be there. We, Mike, and we'll get some of the people there.
The fifteen.
All the planning. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be here on seven o'clock on.
And so Mike's.
Seven?
Seven o'clock.
Oh, I think I had it at six. So I was gonna be here in early.
Oh, good.
We're getting hungry and angry.
We haven't given you a whole lot of great direction yet, well, but let's do this. What I think I hear is. And I think I'll hold off until the town hall to get that feedback as well, but the direction is generally. Maybe notch this in the direction of making sure this is refined so that most of this pertains to new construction. Maybe the maintenance stuff can be required or suggestions, recommendations or best practices.
I think that would handle.
That that's kind of what I'm pulling out of of the comments I'm hearing is focus this strictly on new development. Recommendations of how you can be good stewards of these areas, but not mandates.
And 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 again, make sure that that this is uh, you know, available easily through either a link on the website. So that people can review this well before the town hall meeting and uh, cuz I I I think the. You know, getting getting these things into the public hands with plenty of time for them to peruse these.
You made a couple of changes.
Yeah, well, the the minor changes I talked about, which is the expansion of buildings, to make the. More substantial changes, I won't have that by by the fifteenth, so.
But but what the website has now is the most recent. I think it's it's one, or it's the January most recent one. With with references that the memo, we even have the memo on that he provided all of you. That that's been on.
He said we are gonna strike a couple of lines.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that. Those are.
Yeah, that that's what I was saying. It's just a couple of things, because no, I expect, I'm hopeful. That we'll have a good discussion and we'll get things where there, we can, we can move forward. The rest of the flood ordinance is really, really well done and important and I'd like to get it approved.
And that's one question, as, and this is the, following the Calaway to California, there's a lot of their. Ordinances and laws. Has there been a consideration for uh, secondary ownership? Where the ownership change, once the ownership changes a piece of property, they go into the new regulation or new ordinance?
That grandfathering clause.
Uh, except that changes it. So typically not. It's usually triggered by development activity. I don't think we have anything in our city code anywhere that's. Triggered by ownership, except maybe to use.
What's that? That when ownership changes?
I haven't seen anything like that. Luke has more on development.
Well, hey, I wanna say thank you. Uh, this was, I think it was a productive uh, discussion and thank you for your input, everybody. So. If to to be continued. So the next item is a review of calendars and upcoming events. The Cottonwood Heights Children's Choir free registration for its school. Grade third to sixth rehearsals start February fifteenth. Uh, starting February sixteenth at nine AM and every Thursday ever thereafter, we will have a legislative work session beginning at nine AM. Uh, February twenty-fourth. It was that?
Does that say remotely?
It's.
It is a remote.
Yeah, I'm sure everyone understands the term.
The Arts Council presents Sweetheart Paint Night starting this Saturday in City Hall. Uh, on the the twenty-fourth of February, the cost is seven dollars. Be happy free registrator, there's limited, limited seating. We're looking forward to the March second uh, dinner with the youth council, with the mayor and city council. March seventeenth and eighteenth, the Cottonwood Heights Arts Council is doing auditions here at City Hall for Guys and Dolls Musical. The Easter account on April eighth at Butler Hill Park at ten AM and then. Cottonwood Heights Butlerville Days on the twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth. So we do have um, some items to discuss in a closed meeting this evening concerning property acquisition. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to to move into a closed meeting.
We we close our open session and open a closed meeting after a five-minute break.
I'll serve you.
Uh, I'll.
Anyways, okay, thank you. So we will have.